Okay, City Council Meeting on Tuesday, May 3, 2022. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:30. Pledge a Legion lead by Mayor Ding, that's me.
Please stand and face the flag and put on your right hand or your heart. Please repeat after me. I pledge a legion to the flag of the NISA of NECA. Stand this for which you stand, one nation, unafraid, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. Please sit.
Okay, okay. Clerk, roll a call please.
Mayor Ding.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
We will now have some announcement from our Assistant City Clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 and our online platforms. If you wish to address the City Council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker request card and hand it to me. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive City Council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Thank you. Number one, approve our agenda order. Staff is recommend that the City Council cancel the close section at the end of the agenda. Is there a motion approved agenda order?
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion made by the Councilmember Manchaca and second by Vice Mayor Harrington.
Motion passes by vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
Next item is presentations. Item A, employee introductions. City Manager Lazaretto and members of the executive team will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to remind everybody of what these items were. It's been a couple of years since we've been in person, and when we were in person prior to COVID, we would have our employees that were hired newly, we would have them introduced to both the council and the public so that the City Council would know who they were if you came into City Hall or had any business to do with them or when they come up to make presentations, and also for the community to get to know our employees. So tonight, you have a lot of employees in front of you because these are folks who may have been hired anytime over the last couple of years and are finally crawling out from under COVID, so bear with us tonight, and I'm excited to introduce you to all of them, and I'm sure you'll agree that they fit right in with our team and make up that crazy but talented team that we have. So with that, I would invite our Community Development Director Aldo Cervantes up to do his introductions.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm proud to introduce our new staff for the Community Development Department. I'll start off with Caroline Velardi. She's our Economic Development Manager. Caroline started with the city recently, April 11, 2022. Caroline was formerly the Housing and Economic Development Analyst for the City of Ucaipa. While at the City of Ucaipa, Caroline assisted the business community with maneuvering through the COVID experience and pandemic. In addition, she provided the business community with grant programs as well as helped launch new grant programs for the City of Ucaipa. So I'd like for you to welcome Caroline Velardi.
Thank you, Aldo, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm really thrilled to be here as the city's new Economic Development Manager. One of the things that appealed to me about San Gabriel is its rich history and its tradition, how it's very much embedded in the city's identity as its growth, so I'm really excited to be part of the team here. I'm a single parent to a daughter, Lily, who's nine. She's my pride, joy, and my inspiration. So yeah, I'm just excited to be part of this new team and look forward to helping to continue our businesses grow and succeed.
Thank you.
And next in line, we have Christine Song, who's our new Senior Planner. Christine started with the City of San Gabriel March of this year as well. Christine was previously with the City of Arcadia as well as with the City of San Marino. Christine brings a lot of experience with design review as well as experiencing managing large-scale projects, so I'd like to welcome Christine Song.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I just want to start off by saying that it's a privilege to be here. I was born and raised in the San Gabriel Valley area, so I do have some roots here. And actually, my sister was a city planner here at San Gabriel many years ago, and she had nothing but great things to say about the city. So I'm excited to be here, and I look forward to serving the community.
And next up, we have Marlon Cervantes, our new Assistant Planner. Marlon started with the City of San Gabriel November of last year. As the Assistant Planner, Marlon shares responsibilities in managing our public counter as well as other current planning duties, for example, managing and facilitating our design review process. Marlon previously worked for the City of San Marino as well as worked for the City of Lancaster. I can assure you, council, that Marlon and I are not related. You know, we checked that many years ago, so Marlon Cervantes.
Thank you, Aldo, for confirming that. And good evening, Mayor and City Council. I've been here a little longer than my colleagues that were early introduced, so I can say that it's been a pleasure working here, and I look forward to continue my professional career here. Thank you.
And not last but not least, Maria Sanchez, who was our Neighborhood Improvement Services Supervisor. Maria's been with the city for five years. She recently was promoted to the Neighborhood Services Improvement or Neighborhood Services Supervisor, I gotta get that right, recently, and so she took on that role to help manage the Neighborhood Improvement Services process, which is also known as code enforcement. Maria has extensive knowledge on matters related to public nuisance cases, abatement of code violations. What sort of launched Maria into this position of being a supervisor is her approach with code enforcement, and she takes an education-first approach with respect to looking at abatement of code violations, so that's a high value that I see as well as Maria as well. So introduce Maria Sanchez.
Thank you, Aldo. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I am happy to jump into this opportunity as Senior NIS Officer, as well as I have no doubt that I will continue to succeed, especially with the exemplary management team that is behind me. I look forward to continue to communicate thoroughly and effectively with the community. My approach is not only bettering the city from a business perspective, but also from a humanistic perspective, so thank you for the opportunity.
Rebecca, would you mind introducing your folks?
Good evening, Mayor Ding and members of the City Council. I am very pleased to introduce one of the newest members of the Community Services Department who actually has been with us now since July of 2020, so she's been with us some time, but came during the height of the pandemic, and so I'm pleased to introduce her to you tonight. This is Amy Cortez. Amy is our Recreation Coordinator. Amy was the former Teen Center Director for the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Foothills in Monrovia, where she oversaw daily operations of the facility and grant-funded youth programs. She also had 10 years of recreation experience with the City of Dwardy. During the pandemic, Amy coordinated our virtual after-school program and virtual family game nights. She played a key role in our senior meal program and continues with that program today. Amy oversees our after-school programs and assists with citywide special events, including Fall Fun Fest, Spring Celebration, and Dia de los Muertos, and I'll give a shameless plug for our event this Friday is our Cinco de Mayo event, and Amy will be assisting with that event. And finally, she'll be coordinating our Summer in San Gabriel Movies and Concert Series and Art in the Parks, so you'll be seeing her definitely around this summer. So please join me in welcoming Amy Cortez.
Thank you, Rebecca, for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor Ding and City Council. It's been a privilege to work for the Community Services Department so far. I look forward to providing fun and exciting and innovative programs to the residents of San Gabriel. It truly has been an honor. We have an amazing Community Services Team, so I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity and the opportunity to finally meet you all. Thank you.
Will, if you don't mind coming up and introducing your folks?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I too am excited to introduce the new members to the Finance Department. First up, we have Michelle Marquez. She is our full-time Management Analyst. Michelle has been with us since February 14 of this year. She comes from us from the City of Sill Beach, where she was there for eight years as a Senior Accounting Technician. Michelle's focus in the Finance Department will be on the budget, helping on the budget updates, helping on the annual budget, as well as various other tasks that come along with a Management Analyst position, so please join me in welcoming Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm very happy to be here. I jumped in here at a very busy time of year, and it's been a great process to work with everybody's here. It's an amazing leadership. Some of my background, I've worked on projects like system conversions, a huge parking project for the City of Sill Beach where we won a Technology Award, so I've been involved in lots of different projects. And in my personal time, I've been fundraising for Relay for Life for over 10 years. We've thrown golf tournaments, different fundraisers, so I'm very proud of the community events that I participate in, and I love it. And so that's what drew me to San Gabriel, because you have such amazing community events, and you can just feel the sense of home here, so thank you for having me here.
Next up, we have David Suein. He is our full-time IT Manager. I think some of the council members met him, but it was virtually, and so it's a pleasure to bring David here in person. David has been with us since January of this year. David comes from us from the City of Montebello, where he was there for over 20 years, the majority of that time as IT Manager. He has a Master's in Information Systems from the University of Phoenix. David has done an incredible job just taking over the IT, the reorganized IT operations. He's brought two full-timers into his team. He's taken on the Police Department IT as well as the city transitioning out from a contractual IT setup to an in-house, and these guys have just been really, really busy improving our infrastructure here for the City of San Gabriel, so please join me in welcoming David.
Good evening, Mayor Ding and members of the council. I'm actually honored to be here. I spend a lot of time, my free time, with my wife here in San Gabriel, so I shop here, I eat here most of the time, and thank you for the introductions. Our team, my team, has been very busy transforming the IT infrastructure of the city, and our goal is to prepare the city, build and strengthen the infrastructure of the city's police so that we can bring in more services to the city and as well as the residents. So without having a good foundation for the infrastructure, we can't provide that. So my goal is to do that and make work and IT more proficient and efficient for the entire city. We are looking to revamp the council chamber, bringing better sound quality and better video, so that's already in our goal. And we hear you, Councilmember Manchaca, about the Wi-Fi. We are working on that, and what's stopping us and sort of finishing it is the supply shortage, as you all know that. It's very difficult to get any hardware right now. It's just a battle to get our hands on the equipment. So as soon as it comes and as soon as it completes, you will see it and you will see the changes. Thank you. Good night.
Last but not least, we have Jeremy Esquivias. Jeremy started with the City of San Gabriel back in 2017 as a part-time IT Specialist. After five years of dedicated service, Jeremy applied for and was selected for the full-time IT Specialist position. Jeremy began that position of March of this year, at the end of March of this year. Jeremy has a bachelor's degree from Cal State LA, and so please join me in welcoming Jeremy.
Thank you, Will, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor Ding and City Council. Just want to say I'm very thankful for the opportunity. San Gabriel has been a really great city to work for these past five years. I'm just really looking forward to the next couple of years, I don't know, for the rest of my career, who knows? Good benefits here. But I just really also really want to give a special thanks to Mark, Will, Edward, and David. These guys have been working really hard to kind of help get the city where we're supposed to be, and there's three words that I've always used, which is participation, communication, and modernization. I think those three really sum up the big goals that IT has in the near future, and we have just completely transformed and brought everything more in-house, and it has allowed us to be much more efficient, much more team-oriented, and just overall, I think we've just had really positive feedback. So nonetheless, there is a lot of work to be done still, so very excited to be part of that and to be a part of these upcoming changes that the city is in for, for the better, of course. So just thank you to these guys, and thank you all. Appreciate it.
And finally, Greg, if you could introduce your folks?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Greg Devink, Public Works Director and City Engineer for the City of San Gabriel, and tonight I get the pleasure and honor of introducing a new employee to the Public Works Department, Kimber Gutierrez. Kimber has been with Public Works for about seven months, but she's far from new to the city. She's worked part-time at the Playhouse for a very long time. She comes to us with a lot of city knowledge. On occasion, she's our department historian. She's born and raised in San Gabriel, and she's actually fourth-generation San Gabriel on her father's side. So congratulations to San Gabriel for producing a smart, competent, and all-around wonderful person. Kimber is our Administrative Assistant. She is the front face of Public Works. She greets people who come to the door. She handles the variety of random emails that come in. She answers the calls, but she's also been going around to the various groups within Public Works, learning how they operate and really helping them out. So with that, I would like to welcome Kimber Gutierrez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Thank you, Greg, for that introduction. I have been with the city for almost 22 years now, so I was a part-time Playhouse Staff Member for 21 years, and so I, as Greg says, he stole me away from the Playhouse after those 21 years, but I'm very excited with the opportunity that I have with Greg and the entire Public Works staff, and I thank Mark and the entire City Council and the entire executive team for giving me this opportunity to flourish in the City of San Gabriel. Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, if I can ask you all to come up front and all the employees to come up so we can get a group photo for some of our outreach?
We might have to go back a little bit. Yeah, can we go over this way? Can we go this way, this way a little bit?
Wow, we have a big team recognized, so we have the good future, right? All right, and next item, please.
Next item is Item B, Recognition of First Place Baker-to-Vegas Challenge Cup Relay Race Multi-Agency Team. Police Chief Harris will make the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name's Eugene Harris. I'm the Police Chief for the City of San Gabriel, and tonight I'm glad to present to you and very proud to present to you the first place in the 99 Division of the Baker-to-Vegas Challenge Cup Relay. Our team, which encompassed runners and support staff from the San Gabriel Police Department, the Vernon Police Department, and the Pasadena City College Police Department. Not all of them are here, but a lot of the folks that were on that team are here, so they're standing there looking like studs, which they are. You have to know that this race is a very grueling race. It's been in place for quite a while, and our group has run it several times. One interesting note before I get to the details of the race is that your team number is the position that you finished in overall the year prior. So this year, our team was Team 102, so they did very well in a field of about 200 and over 260 to 70 teams last year, but this year, fast forward to next year, they're going to actually be Team 34. So overall, out of 270 teams, this team came in 34th overall in first in their division, so it's an outstanding accomplishment. So many years ago in 2001, when I felt like that, I ran Leg 11, which at that time went through Perump, and it is one of those things that I promised I would never do again. So every time I watch these guys get ready for it every year, my hat gets tipped to them with the respect that it takes and the attention to detail and patience and commitment it takes to get out there and run that race, which starts in the daytime sometimes, starts in the nighttime other years, and then traverses over the course of 16, 17, 18 hours, depending on your time. This year, our team finished in 16 hours and 38 minutes, which is outstanding, and we're looking for them to beat that time next year. So just so you're aware of what the race is, the Challenge Cup Relay began in 1985 with 19 teams as a race for police officers to improve their physical fitness. Pulling together 20 runners per team along with the necessary support personnel is only the first step along the challenge path. This year, there were 270 teams, thousands of runners, hundreds of support personnel, countless volunteers, tens of thousands of dollars, and innumerable work hours culminating in the finest race possible. This event is the Super Bowl of law enforcement competitions. The purpose of this race is to provide a highly competitive event, and it's to promote camaraderie, physical fitness, pride, and teamwork throughout a broad spectrum of law enforcement personnel. The grueling non-stop competition demonstrates the need for superior physical fitness and teamwork. It also presents a unique and more positive view of law enforcement and the public we serve. That's always indicated by the number of folks that go out there to become spectators at this event, and certainly after the event is over, the parties in Las Vegas are incredible, so there's a draw. If there's ever a time to do a crime in LA County or anywhere in the state, it's Baker-to-Vegas because all the cops are in Vegas. I gave away the secret. The Challenge Cup starts in Baker, California, along State Highway 127, and follows the highway north through the town of Shoshone, California, where it branches east on State Highway 178, and then crosses into Nevada via State Route 372, and after a few miles, the course passes through Perump, Nevada, where it turns onto State Route 160. The race course is divided into 20 grueling stages with various ascents, descents, weather, and elevations, and finally, the finish line is at the Rio Hotel in Las Vegas. Imagine that, right, where the fun is. All right, our team is comprised of runners and support staff from the San Gabriel Police Department, as I said, the Vernon Police Department, and the Pasadena City College Police Departments. And the fact that they're here recognizing this thing, you might have seen them walk in, their legs are still a little sore, people are still walking a little stiff, but some of these runs or these legs or stages, they range from four miles to 10 miles. Some are going really uphill, some are all downhill, some are in the middle of the heat, some in the middle of the cold, and so it's just one of those really challenging things that these folks undertook, and it's really something to be admired. So I want to give a little bit of special recognition before I turn it over to the Mayor for his remarks, to our team captain, which is from San Gabriel Police Department, Steve Gayona, and the co-captain, Sergeant Tony Encinas, who's from Vernon PD. I don't think he's here tonight. Okay. And with that, I present to you, council and members of the community, our Baker-to-Vegas champions.
And Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for some comments.
Okay, thank you. So thank the Chief Harris that introduced our team, and looks like based on the talking about it, they got, the City Council is really proud of you, and we'll keep our, looks like our community will be safety, but also I want you, like Chief said, you need to recover ASAP for the next song. Okay, so keep going, keep our community friendly competition and teamwork organization and great agency representative. We wish you future success and even better finish next year. Congratulations, Team 102, and good luck for next year, number 34. 34. Excellent. Really quick, before I bring them up to do a picture with the council, if that's okay, their team captain would like to say a few words. Mr. Gayona?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just want to start off with thanking my team, my runners. They did a really good job this year. They ran their butts off. I was tired. It was exhausting. It was probably one of the most stressful Baker-to-Vegas. But like Chief mentioned, it is, it's a lot of hard work, a lot of time. I mean, we're talking about fundraising, trying to get donations so that can pay for the run. We have a lot of expenses throughout the whole time we're training. It's also hard trying to get these guys who love donuts to come out and run. So it does take, we usually start training about, it takes about three to four months, but thank you very much. I want to thank the Chief especially for allowing us to run, along with the Chief from Vernon and PCC. Thank you.
Next item, please. Item C, Proclamation for Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Mayor Ding will make the presentation.
Welcome, gabarinos, visitors, and members of the law enforcement community for this City Council recognition of the upcoming National Police Week. We are proud of to recognize National Police Weeks, which has occurred which has occurred every May since 1962, when President John F. Kennedy proclamation May 15 as a National Peace Officer Memorial Days and calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week established by a joint resolution of the Congress in 1962. This annual event honors those law enforcement officers who have lost their life in the line of duty and paid special recognition to officers across the country for their sacrifice and selfless protection of others. National Police Weeks, it's a collaborative effect if part of the many organizations dedication to the honoring American law enforcement community, their service to this society, education to community. And they are very demonstrated by those drawn to the serve. The City, San Gabriel Council is very proud of the recognized National Police Weeks and our police officers who keep San Gabriel safe. We thank you for your service. We also honor the two foreign officers from the San Gabriel Police Department. And thanks them, they are family as they have made this ultimate sacrifice. San Gabriel Police Department, its officer, it's Alvin W. Hennes, is end of watch Wednesday, September 6, 1933, caused by vehicle assault. And Police Officer Elmer H. Griffin, and end of watch Sunday, February 7, 1926, caused by gunfire. Okay, and I have the proclamation to the Chief Harris. Next. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is Item D, Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Mayor Ding will make the presentation.
Yeah, okay. It's May, it's Asia American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. That's especially, it's for me, I think also for our Asia Americans, it's very important, the month. It's especially like even like two years ago, like entire Asia hate. So we need like this Asia heritage education to like communicate each other, let the community understand each other, we love each other. And so also, I recognize like this weekend, Saturday, May 7, 2020, and from the 4th to 7, have the Convention STV, they have the Block the Hate Rally 2022 in the Vincent Lugo Park. Okay, this event's celebration AAPI Heritage Month, and it will include various speakers and entertainment, raffle, food truck, and small API owners, small business vendor. Register for the, this is a free event, and you can search by Block the Hate Rally. So the people can encourage a community member to attend this event and more like understanding each other. Okay, thank you. And I have the proclamation here. And Asia American Pacific Island have distinguished their self as a lending research in things, medicine and technology as innovative farmers and ranchers. As a distinguished lawyer, judge, and government leader as a prominent contribution in the art, literature, and sports as war heroes who defended for our country and as a peacetime healthcare hero currently on the front line of the COVID-19 pandemic. So now, where as before, I, Tony Ding, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of our City Council, Vice Mayor John R. Harrington, Council Member Denise Manchaga, Council Member Karina Rivera, and the Council Member John Wu, to hereby proclamation, May 2022, as the Asia American and Pacific Island Heritage Month in the City of San Gabriel, and urge the citizens of San Gabriel to join me in this special observation. Date, May 3, 2022. Thanks. And the next item?
Next item is Item E, Proclamation for National Preservation Month. Mayor Ding will make that presentation.
Yeah, okay, it looks like the May is a lot of proclamation, a lot of event. Okay, we need to remember, that's good, right? And also, yeah, previous, we just talking about the Asia Americans, but this National Preservation Month also, it's really helped us to understand the national history for our country. It's almost 240 something. But I know our city is even before the United States founded, right? It's 1771, it's more historical. So it's really the meaningful months for, especially for our City of San Gabriel. We are City of the mission, right? Okay, so now, where for I, Tony Ding, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, California, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor John R. Harrington, Council Member Denise Manchaga, Karina Rivera, and John Wu, to hereby proclamation, May 2022, as the National Preservation Month in the City of San Gabriel, and urge citizens of San Gabriel to join me with this special observation. May, date, May 3, 2022. Okay. All right, and the next item, please.
Our next item is Item F, Statewide Organics Recycling and Edible Food Recovery Presentation. Athens Services Director and Government Affairs, Ed Chen, will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of the Council. Well, Mr. Chen is coming to the podium. I just wanted to give a couple of sentences of a brief introduction on why I asked Athens to do a presentation today. There's a lot of talk in the community about the organics recycling. And I know there are lots of pieces of information we've put out to the public and tried to clarify that. But I think a presentation directly from Athens will go a long way in clearing up some of the mystery around that. And the other thing I wanted Mr. Chen to touch on is we get lots of questions from the community about why we don't have a blue bin. And a lot of people assume that because we don't have a blue bin in San Gabriel that we're not recycling. And so people assume that they have to take their own recyclables to the recycling center in order for us to be greener, so to speak. And that's, as you're going to hear, is not the case at all. Everything you throw into the black bin goes to a facility and all of that gets recycled. And so I wanted Mr. Chen to focus on some of that and hopefully get some information out in the community and answer some of those questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Ding, Vice Mayor Harrington, and Honorable Members of the Council. My name is Ed Chen. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Athens Services, and it's my pleasure and honor to speak to you and give you a progress report on Senate Bill 1383 tonight. Senate Bill 1383 is one of the most consequential legislation in recent years in the waste and recycling industry in the state of California. As you can see on this continuing timeline, it's marked by AB 939 and follow along the timeline with all the various legislation that has really changed the landscape of recycling in California. You may ask, what are organic waste and why is Senate Bill 1383 consequential? Well, organics, if otherwise untreated and left in anaerobic, an environment without oxygen in a landfill, it produces methane gas, which is 72 times more harmful than carbon dioxide. And it's precisely that short-term climate greenhouse gas that we're trying to eliminate. So the next question begs, what are organic waste? So it's not just food, it includes fiber as well as any type of food soil paper. So over the last year, we have talked about how to get residents, businesses alike, and especially in the last four years, trying to get businesses to start segregating some of that organics into a separate green container. Senate Bill 1383 includes many different sections of compliance, and today's presentation is going to focus on some of those areas that's outlined below, that's listed. The city is required to adopt an organic ordinance. The city did so back in October last year and also took on the contract and amended its contract with Athens to include all these extra services that will really bring the city to that next level of organics diversion. And so far, I'm very proud to report that as a progress report, we are doing very well in San Gabriel. It is not without some hiccups, of course, with multifamily residences and people with questions. But all in all, San Gabriel sees fantastic participation in Senate Bill 1383. So I'll start going into the collection program and some of the other areas of compliance that's required. First is the route audits. The route audits requires that not only are Athens collecting their trash, but we're to go by and flipping every lid and document that on a quarterly basis. So here's an example of what an auditor would do. We have equipped these two brand-new Jeeps that are going around to our communities. They will have an in-app view, a tablet, that will then document that and also take picture of that particular can. And just like the City of San Gabriel, Athens share your philosophy of an education-first approach. So we are not going to be the trash police. We're not coming and fining people for nonparticipation. It is only in terms of the last resort after multiple times of violation. I believe from the most part, San Gabriel has been very, very, very participa- has seen very awesome participation when it comes to curbside organics recycling. Here's an example of what that audit summary would look like. I just asked that they pull together a screenshot of what that would look like so that the city, as well as the state, will have a dashboard, a kind of a view. Here's an additional picture of what it will look like when that auditor will go take a picture of that particular screen. Here's some example of what contamination looks like. Of course, we're encouraging our residents to put their green and organics waste into that green container. Everything else into that mixed waste container. And just like the City Manager has mentioned, we have a material recovery facility that is state-of-the-art. And for any residents that have any questions or concerns about not recycling, we'd love to partner with the city and begin to start doing tours again. We've been quiet on the tours in the last two years because of COVID. But before that, we commissioned a number of trips to our material recovery facility. And we welcome any San Gabriel residents to see themselves to see what type of operation conveyor belts and the technology, including optical scanners, that we employ in order to really get a good sorting of the waste stream that the residents put into that mixed waste container. As for outreach and recycling, we continue to have a very robust program. I think each resident received a billing insert at the very beginning of the year. Our website continues to be updated with a completed recycle guide. It's powered by Recyclist. It's a service that allows us to customize each city. So you can actually go to canirecyclemy.com or go through that link on the Athens website and go to the drop-down box into San Gabriel. And if you have any questions about any type of waste stream, you can punch that in and you'll be able to find which can it goes into. So in San Gabriel, it's actually very simple. Anything that's wet and organic, that can naturally decay over time, put in the green container. Anything that's dry, that can go through a sort line and be recycled into a different product, put it into the black container. We will do that, it's kind of a wet versus dry type system. We think that that actually helps people understanding what to throw away and which can. A big part of Senate Bill 1383 is procurement support. Athens is, through our purchasing of renewable natural gas to fuel our fleet, is going to help the city comply with that. But also, I think, very importantly, the citizens actually help us out greatly because the law actually talks about compost as a way of complying with this procurement support as well. And on the picture, and as I'm going to show, is some of the past compost giveaway events we've had here in the City of San Gabriel. You see the long line, we've tried to make it a very easy process for residents to pick up some of these composts. And speaking about our composts, I want to just share this slide real quick. In the past, about maybe, currently, we're looking at about 4% of our entire compost output going to cities. And we see that growing slightly. But on that orange pie chart, you see that the 50% consumer packaging, that includes some of the big-name companies like Kellogg or Scotts. You guessed it, if you go to a home improvement store, if you look under those brands, you look under organic compost, these bagging operations are buying Athens compost. So it's a great value to our residents, and we're very happy to bring back to our residents. And speaking of which, we have a compost giveaway event this Saturday. It's going to be at Smith Park, a parking lot. First hour, it's going to be limited to 30 gallons per household. And after the first hour, between hours of 10:00 and noon, it will be unlimited while supplies last. So we encourage all San Gabriel residents to partake and to help, continue to help the city close the loop and meet the mandates of Senate Bill 1383. So that brings to the end of my presentation. My cellphone is listed on here. With any San Gabriel resident that may have any questions, concerns about their recycling program, we're happy to continue to provide this progress report and update. And thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. So has any Councilmember have the question? Okay, Councilmember Rivera.
Hi. You talk about contamination audits. So what is considered contamination, just so people know?
So we encourage that residents participate fully, what goes into which cans. We have a PDF of what goes into which cans, examples, also as well as that Recyclist Recycling Guide that's on our website. So we're not looking at like, okay, maybe a piece of trash that went into the wrong can because that particular piece of trash may be a piece of paper that could go into an organics container to be composted. So we're not nitpicky, but so to speak, we're looking at major items that may, major instances of noncompliance. So if someone's really just completely with disregard of their selection of their waste stream, they're just putting everything into the green, or once the black is filled up, there's, you know, oftentimes with overfilled containers, we see that kind of a contamination. And of course, we take an education-first approach. We're going to be working with the city, working with the residents, and giving them multiple opportunities to comply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Manchaga.
Real quick, number one, just for staff to put this report into our agenda so they can access it. I'm not sure if it was there, I don't remember seeing it. But if you can put this available. And then second, Ed, I wanted just to ask you for, when the bills are paid by the residents, do you put this type of outreach and education in the bills? Or is it accessible to each resident? Because as much as we try to do our outreach, it's almost impossible. But I was hoping maybe the bills, the invoices, you know, have this information in there. Like especially page, well, there's no page here. But the page where it says outreach and education, you know, maybe the digital, electronic, just so- you know, maybe the digital, electronic, just so, I mean, it should be part of the education process.
Absolutely, thank you very much for that question, Councilmember Manchaca. We have a billing insert that is designed with the approval and knowledge of CalRecycle that we deploy to residents, and those are annual requirement that we must comply with to each resident. I know there's some challenges with reaching a multifamily resident, if they're, not every resident is getting an Athens bill in their mail. But we are taking a very robust approach with our social media. So looking at geo-fencing and other ways that we can really target that message to San Gabriel as well as all our client cities. So not only electronic, not only with print media, we're going to try to, again, do more events and with in-person outreach as well. So we also have a team of recycling coordinator that visited each of the businesses and multifamily establishments. So we're still working it out. I think barrels have been deployed and participation overall has been really great. But San Gabriel, and this is to your credit, the city has adopted that early on, while a lot of cities are scrambling still to comply with this law. That became effective January 1st of this year. So we're looking very forward to improving our processes and system in the city of San Gabriel.
Just one last question, so we have multiple languages here. So how do you do that outreach, you know, multiple languages? Is it an insert that already has it translated, or what's your strategy?
We have multilingual staff members that would accomplish that. So our recycling coordinators, I know, especially for Mandarin speakers, I designed the Mandarin flyers myself, and I think there's a lot of, there's already a lot of buy-in with this program because people and the city is very environmentally conscious. So with Senate Bill 1383, I feel like it's been a pretty natural bridge to looking at food waste. But also, we want to educate people, it's not just food, but all organic material as well.
And so that would include our restaurants, because we are the foodies of San Gabriel Valley. So we have quite a few businesses involved with the, in the food industry. So you have a specialized area for restaurants where you can make sure they're in compliance?
Absolutely, we have recycling coordinators as well as zero-waste managers that are fluent in multiple languages. We have outreach material in multiple languages. And I think when it comes to food and when it comes to trash and these basic needs, I think a lot of business owners and residents are jumping on board, it really has no boundary. I think we are doing our best to cross those, any of those boundaries and talk and get full compliance from our residents and businesses.
Great, thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. I'm Mr. Chen. Thank you so much for the presentation. I got numerous calls about, from the neighbors, that they're actually in the community, you know, it's like a gated community, or it's like a condominium units or PUD things. They do have seen the green beans. However, at the beginning, they didn't know that what the green bean for. So it just, you know, just, someone just placed their trash can outside of the curb. So they complaining about, oh, it's like less space for them to park because they are, they purchased the parking permits, overnight parking permits. So, and I spoke to them and tried to educate them too. But it's just like the Councilmember Manchaca said, it's so hard that we can reach out to, you know, every single properties and the homeowners or tenants. But they do have some concern that I, maybe you can address that issue too. But the, you know, I know that you said that San Gabriel is quite very successful doing the green beans and the organic items collections. But actually, I have seen several of them, they just dump whatever inside. So I think there's some value rates on the green beans, but also people, they are kind of hesitant to dump the food inside the beans because that, you know, now the weather is not that bad, but when it's getting hotter, it's in the summer, then there will be more flies, you know, cockroach, you know, the bugs and everything that. So do you have any kind of like a solution, or have you any, do you have any plan that to get the problem resolved? That is something that could happen in the future. And of course, it's some of the condominium units or the PUD units, they have the trash bean inside of their community. But now there's like additional trash bean, but they just not know where they should put it there. So that, the only way is they just put the trash bean outside of their community. And so, I mean, is it possible that you can just design some kind of the trash bean that was partitioned? That is, another side is for organic, and another, this side is for everything else. And the last thing is, since we are, have very limited time that the law was starting to enforce, if the green bean is something that we have to enforce anyway, can you have the notice, like in multi-language, that laminate it and you can zip tie on the trash beans, or you can, you know, attach on the green beans so people were aware this is not the trash beans for anything else but just the organic item? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your observation, Councilmember Wu. We will duly note it, we'll, I know it's, reaching a multifamily audience had always been a challenge. We work with city staff and we sent out multiple letters notifying that, hey, next week you'll be receiving a bin at your property. And as part of that rollout process, some have already started to participate and while others, like you noticed, perhaps some contamination or other issues. The placement of that container, container, as you said, is also an issue with enclosures that are built for specifically a trash, a bin or a dumpster and not necessarily for a cart or barrel. But certainly, we'll be continuing to work with property owners, tenants, and residents about those challenges as we move forward. The cart themselves have a hot stamp on it that is more picture rather than language, as complete with a, with some instructions on how, what type of material goes into them. But certainly, we can always improve upon those outreach. The posters are available in all three, in Mandarin, Spanish, English on the website. But certainly, we can do more always to educate and outreach to the residents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Ed, well, well-received. I think the two questions that I receive the most from residents are the, they just don't believe we're recycling, is number one, because they don't see that blue bin. And then just, as you know, we have blue bins on our, right here that you're showing us, we don't have them. So could you explain for the public how the recycling works, you know, not the, not the organic waste, but just the other cans where it's pretty much everything else? Can you explain the, as you kind of briefly said, we have this great recycling facility, can you go into a little more detail about that?
Absolutely, thank you for this opportunity to talk about our material recovery facility. It's really, we have a, one of the most extensive mixed-waste material recovery facility in Southern California. In fact, we operate two very extensive mixed-waste material recovery facility. And how it works is that when the trash hits the tipping floor, it gets selected. When it gets pushed into the conveyor belt into this, and introduced into the system, it first go through a pre-sort. Some of the larger material is then sorted out. So it could be larger wood material, green waste, or any type of larger material that may jam up our sort line. Then it goes through a bag breaker so that its contents that are inside a plastic bag is liberated, so that it can continue to go on in a conveyor belt. From that point, it either goes to an air density classifier so that material are based, are separated based on how dense they are. And there's really nothing but to look at that facility, then to tour that facility, or I can point to a YouTube, our YouTube channel, which has an extensive video outreach that talks about our material recovery facility and how we classify that waste. But once that waste has been classified based on its density, then it goes through various sort lines. And that sort line may be staffed by actual laborers on the line or machines. Those machines include optical scanner where we scan each material as they go by, and the computer is able to register a chemical signature of a particular item and shoot a stream of air and let it goes into a separate bunker. So it's like a really amazing factory with conveyor belts and all, all types of material going to different places. And it's a very fun tour for a lot of school-age children, and I particularly enjoy taking school-age children to see that. But I think for adults as well, I think everybody after that tour just come away with a very different idea of trash. And they start thinking about, okay, how can we do different things to make sure that we can fully participate in this mixed-waste program? So fiber, for example, all types of paper are being recycled based on its content, whether it's a mixed paper, whether it's newspaper, whether it's cardboard. They all go to different lines, go to different bunkers, all types of different containers. So your PET or plastic, as well as HDPE or colored, natural like your laundry detergent bottles, all of those different plastic items, you know, three to seven, we're always going through them and separating them. So that material recovery facility is really something to see. It's available on our YouTube channel, but I'm more than happy to take groups of residents and perhaps city officials on that tour to see this material recovery facility.
Thanks, because I, I wouldn't say I got into an argument with residents, but I would say that it was more education because they don't believe that without the blue bin that we can be more efficient. And I tried to explain how, when you have professionals doing the recycling rather than crowdsourcing it, you actually do get a better recycling rate. And so they, I encourage them to go to your YouTube and then, you know, schedule a tour if you can because when you see what's actually happening, it's basically expert recycling rather than trying to let the general public do it.
Absolutely.
That's kind of the way I would explain it to the average person if they're not really familiar with what goes on there. And then the second thing is, probably the most common question, but I get it, is the billing. People don't understand, we're billed every other month, we're not billed every month, correct?
Correct.
And so when they see their bill, they're like, oh, we're double what name the city is. Whereas others, most other cities are billing once a month, correct? Or a lot of them are?
Every city has a different methods of billing, but certainly, yes, we have to look, the monthly rate is usually, well, you have to separate that, divide that by the number of months that it's being billed in that billing period.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it looks like they are asking all the question I want to asking. But I just have this suggestion, I also with the City Manager Mark, is our city website also have a link to the Ensen? They have a link to?
We do have links to Athens on our website, but we'll make sure the presentation is up and as well as the links to their YouTube channel for questions on recycling.
Okay, maybe, maybe just some link is a specify, direct go to the like, the question that all the council member asking, like, how do you have the, you do the like sorting for the recycle? And how do you like outreach the people understanding the green wa- waste the recycle to? The, maybe it's easy to access, also, I think by the language is good too. So the link, I think it just, to help the resident to easy to access, direct access their right page. Otherwise, I know that go to the pages, people search, it's hard to find it, right? So it's a try, make the resident friendly, to easy to, to access. So hopefully, also, I, I, I'm willing to join the, your tool to see the, the facility, how to sorting, yeah, and plus the YouTube. So maybe after we have the tool, I think I have the confidence to, like Vice Mayor Harrington, we have confident to explain to our resident, how do you help us, the, your company help our city resident? And, yeah, so thank you, have the good presentation. Actually, a lot of people, another question, like Councilmember Wu talking about, especially for the apartment and the condo media, they really have the problem for the, where they, the new bean can put on because their space is limited when they design, only the big trash can. Or like, maybe the suggestion for the, your, your bigger bean, maybe have this, have this some divided, maybe it's to save their space, but I don't know, I don't know if it's really workable or not. Maybe your company can do this some research on that. Yeah, that's, I, because San Gabriel currently, especially if we have a lot of like a mixed use, it's face the same problem too, you know, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Dean.
Mayor Dean, may I have one more question? I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's a, I think you just mentioned about that, that you do have like an instruction on the trash bean already. So is it the one that you, you were talking about? Is it the one that, on outside of the trash bean?
It should be on the lid, on, when the lid is down. And, oh yeah, like that, like that picture, but also the hot stamp that is on the bin. That's an older picture, but the newer stamp is a, more of a picture-based without a whole lot of words, but you could see what is allowed and not allowed.
Right, because I understand the education, especially try to educate a community that will takes long, it's a long journey. But I mean, with this kind of, you know, instruction or, you know, the notice, I guarantee you, no one will stand next to the trash can and just read that because it is smelling. I mean, no one would just stand next to the trash bin and it's so weird, unless they want to pick something from inside. So I would suggest, I mean, because you will be putting a lot of efforts on that. So if that would be too small and hard for people to see it, it's better that just tell people, don't dump other things except the green waste or organic waste or food. Perhaps that will help because, you know, otherwise, no one will just, just read the little words. I mean, I can't, I won't do that. So I would assume that, you know, no one would like to, you know, just read something on the top, at the top of the trash bean and look at that, what is that talking about? Even that come with comments, so, yeah, that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
So I just add on the, just based on our city of San Gabriel, currently, we have the four language, English, Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese. So most popular resident here, so maybe it's really help our resident, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. The gentleman.
Okay, your question, it's a, until public comments, right? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, my question is, I've heard people mention, and not saying it's Athens, but they mentioned that the garbage truck comes some by and it takes both containers and puts them in the same truck. Is, is that mean, they say that means I don't have to worry about what I'm doing because they put it in one truck and they take it away and they dump it all in one place? So is that true, it never happens, or what? Is there a hurry?
Okay. Brief second point of privilege. During the COVID months, we did apply for and received approval from several of our communities to co-mingle multiple waste streams into one. Those were during 2020, and I believe during the second wave in 2021, we have already went back to normal two-track or two collection. So during those months, there were some route condense based on the, our labor and our workforce and out of consideration for the safety of all. But those waivers have kind of, it's kind of in our rearview mirror, we have not co-mingle ever since. We've gone back to normal collections.
Thank you.
Are we not going to have any public discussion with your presentation or?
Happy to talk outside.
But people need to hear. If there are, this is a videotaped hearing, it should be available to have a public.
All I wanted to say was, it does leave the public with unknown situation. He explained it properly, but maybe when they do that thing, they could send out a notice that they're doing it so the public don't get the wrong impression.
Okay. So, okay, next item, please. Next item is public comments.
Our next item is item three, public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address this council, please fill out a speaker request card and hand it to the clerk. Our first comment is from Norma Davalos. Hi, here is my public comment on pursuing prosecution misdemeanors at a city level. Everyone to everyone's grandma knows that LA District- Everyone to everyone's grandma knows that LA District Attorney Gascon isn't doing anything to secure safety of its citizens. He doesn't care, and frankly, he just doesn't, he just can't be bothered. Our city must take our safety into our own hands, not only in its duty to its citizens, but in its support of our local police as well as fire department who respond to victims of crime. I support prosecuting misdemeanors on a city level. Next comment is from Chris Bonzon.
Good evening, everyone. I was here last month to talk about enforcement, and I also touched on an issue that happened to me at our residence. It's an HOA property. I've been an owner there for 30 years, and it had, we were doing a lot of renovations to the property, and it had gotten to the point where there was a resident that didn't like the changes happening, and it had vandalized my home. And the most recent thing that happened was that I was given death threats with a knife on my door and red paint splattered all over my garage. So that was last month. Through the adversity, we trudged on and we continued with the renovations. We've just completed our landscape renovation, which is completely drought-free or drought-tolerant. And so a lot of the homeowners in the, it's an HOA property, a lot of the homeowners are very happy with it, with the exception of the one that did a death threat at my house. But almost everyone is very happy with it. It's turned out beautifully. We've come as close as we can to comply with the new city requirements, such as the egress and ingress of our drive-throughs, our driveways, and now the landscape is done. And I've been in touch with the planning division, because we're going to be doing a painting next year. So the, the whole community is just, a lot of renovations are on the way. We've just completed the landscaping, so everyone's very happy. So what I'm here to ask is, if the city would allow me to post signs that says, this is an approved renovation. We've followed the guidelines closely, we've put in trees that are required or are approved by the city. So we've met everything that the city wanted, and I'm asking to, for permission to create signs, I'll design it myself, I just wanted to say something like, beautiful renovation approved by the city. And I wanted to get permission to put those signs in with a city approval on it.
So Ms. Bonzon, I'm sorry if I butchered your last name.
You did not, you did perfectly.
We can't talk about the item tonight, because it's not on the agenda, but I would encourage you to work with our planning department and our police department on that issue. We may not be able to tell you explicitly you can do that, but you certainly can't stop you from doing that kind of thing on your own HOA.
Okay, that sounds good. I just, I wanted to, I didn't want to just take the name of the city and splatter it on our signs, but, I mean, this, this will also encourage homeowners to be proud of this, it's an older property, 30 years old, but when you see a sign like that, it lets owners know you can beautify even an old property. Thank you.
Our next speaker card is from Mary Garcia.
Do we still have to give our name and address? Or no? Yeah, okay. Mary Garcia, 1238 South Pine Street, San Gabriel. I'm here to bring up the situation, and I'm sorry that I didn't, code enforcement didn't stay, but I see a lot of new members there, not a new employees. I have a concern with a lot of homes on Del Mar between Mission and Valley that are really, really bad. I mean, they look like they're abandoned, the weeds, I'm not kidding you, are probably as high as this little gate here. And it's been for months. There's a lot of addresses in the city, not just on Del Mar, that I feel the city needs to go out and do code enforcement. When I used to be with Rebuilding Together, we used to get CBDG funds to go out and help these homeowners. Unfortunately, we don't get any money anymore from the city, we don't get a lot of funding. I still have the, the Rebuilding Together open, but we're unable to do anything because of funding. So I'm asking the city, since I see there's more employees now, to please get the code enforcement out there, check these homes, they're fire hazards. The weeds are dry, you know, the business, their painting is really bad, and especially on Del Mar, now that that's mainstream between the 210 and the 10. It's really embarrassing for the people to go through this main street and see these homes like this. The other ones in the background, yeah, they don't go down the back streets, but Del Mar is really, really bad. So if you could have someone check those out, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker card is from David Lucolio.
Thank you, Mayor Ding and members of the city council. I have four very brief questions that I just want to present to you tonight. Obviously, I don't expect comments, but I would like you to consider these as you move forward. This is regarding the city council's consideration to hire its own prosecutor for local misdemeanors at a projected cost of $200,000 to $400,000. My first question is, what is the current status of that at this point in time? My second question is, is that I have read in the April 19 staff report that the cost associated with further study into this matter would be nominal. My question is, what makes for a nominal cost? What specifically would that amount be? My third question is, why would the city council want to proceed ahead in this investigation, given the fact that the other cities have presented their request to do that, and the DA has told them no? It seems to me that we are going after something that has been denied other cities, and my question is, why are we wasting taxpayer dollars to do that? And then fourthly, in light of the DA's decision to not prosecute misdemeanors, has the city of San Gabriel seen an uptick in misdemeanor offenses? Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Good evening, members of the city council. So tonight, I intend to provide two public comments, one now and then one later under agenda item number 7A. So for this first public comment, I'm wearing my Hear Commissioner hat, and as chairperson, I want to thank council members Manchaca Rivera Wu and Mayor Ding for their support and acknowledgement of the work that the commission is doing. City manager Lazaretto, recreation supervisor Morales Stevens, and Adrian Franquez have been incredible representatives of the city staff, and their service is critical in assisting us to accomplish our goals. In addition to highlighting many other important issues like the celebration and recognition of contributions from people in the Asian American and Pacific Islander community, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. One need only look to the daily headlines to see compelling reasons why focus on mental health and well-being and access to care for mental illness is so important. For many of us, headlines are not necessary, because the struggle to obtain support and care is personal, involving the people we work with, ourselves, or our loved ones. The Hear Commission is planning a mental health awareness event. It was one of the items of our 2022 work plan, and we anticipate it will take place in mid September. I want to say thank you in advance for your support and sincerely hope that your actions, particularly when making budget decisions that could benefit the mental health and safety of our residents, will speak louder than your words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker card is from Debbie Kilgore.
I didn't have a comment until I heard the Athens presentation. I wish you guys would put together where citizens could come and ask questions, because I live by myself, I'm single, I eat out a lot, and I hardly, I never use my green trash can except for two times a year, maybe, when I have to trim the tree in my backyard. So expecting us to divide all the different paperwork, I don't have a newspaper, so I have very little, and where do we have room in our kitchen to put the extra trash cans? And, and for people to really understand, I have a neighbor that's handicapped, he has a brain injury, so he's not going to be able to do the food division and stuff like that. So I think there's needs to be some way to help people understand better, or maybe look at different ways, because when I don't even use my green trash can and I have to put a little bit of food in it, again, a problem that was mentioned was ants and bugs and rats, and what's that going to do? And so there are going to be a lot of people aren't going to do it, and you're not going to tell. I have more pet poo than I have trash, really, at my home. And so having to put the little bit of food I throw away, or the few paper towels I use, that's really going to be a hassle. So if it's a hassle for me, it's going to be a hassle for a lot of single people that live by themselves and don't have caretakers, and they take care of themselves. Thank you.
Okay. Right. Okay. Next item, please.
Our next item is consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion.
Would any council member like to pull another item from separate discussion? No? Can I have a motion?
Sure, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by council member Manchaca, and second by council member Wu. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
And next item, please.
Our next item is public hearing. There is no public hearing tonight, followed by continued business with no continued business items. Our next item is seven new business, or seven new business. Item A, discussion regarding street name change policy and request to change the name of a part of West Ben Camp Street to Hing Wali Place. Community Development Director Cervantes will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The city of San Gabriel has received an inquiry regarding a potential street name change, but before proceeding through the facts of the staff reports, I do want to note that the city has not received an application for a request for a street name change. We're looking for a discussion for tonight's meeting, as well as direction from council. The intent of this report is to seek direction from council on a matter related to street name changes in general, to discuss the potential adoption of a formal process or policy, and to seek direction with regards to the current inquiry that the city has received. As a matter of background, the last known request for a street name change was in 2013, which was a request by a local business owner, Hing Wali, to change the name of an adjacent street from West Ben Camp Street to Hing Wali Place. Although an application and filing fee was submitted for this application in 2013, the process for accepting and reviewing such an application was not pursuant to any standards or policies. Regardless of this, the city processed the application and prepared an ordinance for city council consideration. On August 20th of 2013, the city council approved the ordinance to allow the street name change. Subsequent to that meeting, on October 13th of 2013, the city council reopened the public hearing for this item and received public testimony from interested residents. After the public comment period was closed on that item and council deliberation was concluded, the council voted 3-2 to reject the ordinance as well as reject the street name change. It's important to note tonight that the latest inquiry that the city has received is from the same business owner, but a formal application has yet to be submitted to the city. With respect to a policy, there are pros and cons. A policy can set specific standards and guidelines to assist the decision-making process. Moreover, a policy can be drafted in a manner that continues to benefit the city's history, such as, as noted in the attachment, the county of LA provides standards for street name changes that follow guidelines for sort of historic relevance to a street name change, and the council can very well choose to adopt that kind of a policy. The pros would be with respect to the use of staff resources to create such a policy that may largely go unused over the years, or may increase the frequency of applications. Lastly, whether a policy is created or not, staff would recommend a filing fee in the amount of $726, along with a $1,000 deposit. Staff finds that this amount will certainly absorb the cost of staff time for processing these types of applications. In summary, staff is requesting direction from council to either draft or not draft a specific policy for future street name changes. In addition, staff seeks direction from council on the latest inquiry for the street name change. If the council elects to entertain the request, latest request, staff requests the city council provide direction to staff to return with a formal application of that applicant, as well as draft an ordinance for adoption by the city council. If a policy is not adopted, staff will continue to process these types of applications on a case-by-case basis. And with that said, staff recommends the city council discuss the matter and provide direction to staff on how street name change applications will be handled in the future. I'm open for questions.
Does any council member have a factual question for staff to clarify for that report? No?
Thank you, Mayor Ding.
Council member?
Yeah. Oh, yes. Thank you so much, and according to the attachment C, which is the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works, so this is the street name policy that adopted by LA County, and this is, this attachment is a document that recommended for our city to consider to adopt. Am I understanding that correctly?
It is, it is, it is an example of an existing adopted policy. I know there are several other cities throughout the state of California that also have adopted policies. This is just one example of a local agency.
I see, thank you.
Assistant city clerk, do we have any public comments?
We received a few public speaker cards and a public comment as well. Our first public comment is from Senia Lubisic, and it reads as follows. Mayor Ding and council members, regarding agenda item 7A, the discussion of the name change policy and consideration of name change for Ben Camp Street, I would hope that there is a policy for making name changes to streets or places in San Gabriel. Place naming is an important expression of the city's history and values, and it merits consideration and mindfulness. Place naming should be representative and inclusive. I would hope that the historic context statement anticipated historic inventory and the Historic Preservation Cultural Resource Commission, along with the Hear Commission, would be activated to assist in both the creation of a policy if one does not exist and the evaluation of requests. creation of a policy if one does not exist, and the evaluation of request for both the naming and the name changes to the street and places in San Gabriel. Our first speaker is Mary Camarano.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Ding and council members, our city manager and city attorney. It's just amazing to me that this article comes up again, nine years after it was defeated, and considering the business that did request it. There are so many businesses in San Gabriel that have truly made San Gabriel strong. Claro's Deli, 70 years. Mission Hardware, 70 years plus, and the FaLubrino family continues to give back. The San Gabriel Nursery with their history, 70 years plus. Their history is outstanding. Let's look at them. Let's look at San Gabriel Nursery. Let's do a little bit of honoring with that particular family. Petrelli's Pizza, they are celebrating their 60th year this year in San Gabriel, and they are having their Tuesday special so that they can give back to the community. And by the way, the owner, the founder of Petrelli's Pizza, Norb Lighthouse, passed away last month. Has anyone gone to tell Archie, his son, and his daughter-in-law, Helen, thank you for continuing the business in San Gabriel? And another request, maybe a council should consider adjourning a meeting in Norb Lighthouse's memory, someone who has given 60-plus years to this community. Ria Insurance, 50 years plus and giving. And there's someone up and coming, Pulciano's, 30 years ago, their 30th anniversary is coming up. When the, when we closed the street here where Plaza Park is back in 1994, this district had been abandoned because of the 1987 Whittier earthquake. Businesses had closed. We were suffering in this particular district, and God bless the Pulciano family. They decided to take a chance on us, and they're still here and giving. So these, again, I say, these are just a few off the top of my head, what I can fit into a three-minute segment here, and just bringing it all to your attention. They have made San Gabriel strong. Hing Wali has been in the community 22, 24 years, and they want a street named after them. I just feel that this is really asking quite a bit of a city that has such a lengthy history and other areas that really could be recognized and acknowledged. So again, consider the people, the businesses. What does make San Gabriel strong? I want to thank you so much for listening, and I come here tonight as your conscience, so please give it some thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Garcia.
Hello again. Mayor Ding, council members, city manager and city attorney. Again, Mary Garcia, 1238 South Pine Street in San Gabriel. Again, I spoke back in 1913, 2013, sorry, on this change that they want to do. And again, I'm going to piggyback onto Mary. We have other very important businesses, as you have just heard, that have been in this community for so many years. None of them have ever asked to have their name changed on a street. This is a community that is very close and very, very historical areas. A lot of the name changes would ruin this city. We have historical streets that were named after, I'll say Ramona, Ramona Parler that we have here, for Ramona the Play. We have Las Tunas. Las Tunas was named after all the cactuses that used to grow on Las Tunas, okay? We have Orange. Orange grows right here in California, in San Gabriel. So yes, a lot of our streets, current streets, have a lot of significance to these people in the city. By changing this to this name for this jewelry store is outrageous. The people are going to, if this goes through, the people, you're going to have this city council room full again, like we did back in 2013. So I ask you also, please consider the name change and keep our city historical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Thank you, and good evening once again. So this is concerning item number 7A. Just to begin, the reality for me is that most street names either carry no real significance or too often pay tribute to men whose fame and fortune was built on the unpaid and forced labor of African and Native Americans, or the underpaid and exploited labor of immigrants. Honestly, I don't have any strong feelings about changing the name of Ben Camp Street to Hing Wali Place, because it is in reality another homage to a person of wealth and privilege. It would be easier for me to support this if I felt that along with whatever economic contributions Mr. Lee makes to our city by catering to a very affluent and limited customer base, he also supported local nonprofits and community events in a meaningful way. If that is the case, then please let the residents know. It would, however, represent the first street in San Gabriel named after a person of Asian ethnicity. In a city whose residents are 65% Asian, during the month designated to celebrate Asian-American Pacific Islander heritage, it would seem to be a significant affirmation. At the least tonight, I strongly urge the city council to develop a process for street name changes. Our city's streets are a place to honor the diversity of our residents. People like Toypurina, an important historical figure for the native people of San Gabriel, who helped to lead a rebellion against the Spanish colonizers. Alfred and Miteko Yoshimura, who arrived in San Gabriel in 1922 and established the Mission Nursery, a thriving business that ultimately became the San Gabriel Nursery, even though they were forcibly imprisoned in the internment camps just a few miles from here, or even El Barrio, to honor the vibrant, multi-ethnic community of people forced to live in a defined area of southeast San Gabriel from the 1920s on due to redlining and other racist practices. As our city strives to be inclusive and celebrate diversity, we need to understand that representation matters, and while street name changes should not occur often, there is an opportunity to reflect the diversity of our community with them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Okay. Okay.
My name is Chuck Sanses. I've lived in San Gabriel for 60 years. It's great that Mr. Lee wants to honor his father by changing a short portion of San Gabriel, Ben Camp Street. I have family that lived in East Ben Camp and West Ben Camp, which also are short portions of the city. My question is, what is the significance of Ben Camp? Now, I've been in this city for 60 years. I don't know, so many streets are named after Walnut, this and that. There's nothing named after Washington, or Jefferson, or Lincoln, or Patton, but we have to have some kind of order, and maybe you guys should publish a list of our 350 streets or so, and tell us the significance of that name, so we know. Because I've been living here for 50 years, I'm Ben Camp forever, and I don't know the name of the street. I got a house on Ben Camp. I don't know why it's called Ben Camp. It means nothing to me. It's just a street that, and so you guys should, if you want to show honor to these streets, publish something about it, so we know in the city what our streets are here for, and that we don't change them willy-nilly. But if it has no significance, Walnut Street, if somebody wanted to change that street, that's not any historical, unless you think Walnuts are historical. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other public speaker cards.
All right. It's now time for the council deliberation. Oh, one more? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Ding and council members. So I'm from Hing Wali Jewelers, and I know that this is a very controversial topic that back in 2013, when we discussed to change the name. And Hing Wali Jewelers actually has been in the city of San Gabriel since 1993. So a lot of people don't know, because we just built the, back in 2013, we built a very big retail store on Delma Avenue. We are always in the plaza behind it. So we have been here for 40 years. And, you know, like, Mr. Lee doesn't come from a rich, rich family, as everybody thinks that he is. He has his struggle. He's become a very poor Chinese company, families back in China, it's a long time ago. He swam to Hong Kong to build another business, like beer, you know, like apprentice for J. Kraftor, and then later on came to USA because of a dream. So now he actually realized a dream here, and then he actually set our foundation in the city of San Gabriel. So in 1993, he built his first store in city of San Gabriel, and since then, you know, the business grow with, because we, you know, like, we worked very hard to get some of the brands and everything, so that we, you know, as Davids and everything. So he becomes very famous in that essence. But, you know, it doesn't stop that we actually pay back to the communities, you know, not only for the city of San Gabriel. Every year we donate lots of toys and everything. You know, Davids like sponsored lots of, like, you know, minorities, students, and everything. So we truly hope that, you know, with Ben Camp, that street is actually a very short street without any residents, you know, just like very few business, just us, and then there's a parking structures from, I think, Hawaii Supermarket, and then, you know, there's another business. So we truly hope that, you know, that we can have the name changed, so that it signifies that our dedication is to the city of San Gabriel, and then, you know, also that, you know, we want to grow with the city, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're taking after the city, and the city will take care of us, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other public comments.
No, no more? Right, okay. Last call. Okay. All right. So it's now time for the council deliberation and the discussion. Who would like to study?
I'll go since I was the only one here, I think, besides the people in the audience. I was the only one here last time it was happening.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. So I remember in 2013, this did, it was, it was an issue that came up, and the first go around, the city voted, the city council voted 5-0 to approve, and then about two weeks later, it was a three-to-two not to approve. And I remember it was pretty much 50-50, if you go through the minutes, of people that wanted to do it, people that didn't want to do it. And to me, at the time, I voted yes on it, and I'll just, because I thought it was a great way to be inclusive, to bring a local businessperson in. And honestly, these are not very often, like the city staff report says, people haven't asked very often. I would love to see more businesses, if they're streets that aren't, that don't have significant names right now, to go about that. And I agree that we should have a process. Last time, I voted to have a process, and it was shut down. We would have had an ordinance we could be working under right now, that for some reason the council didn't want to even have a policy or a process. I didn't understand that decision at the time, and if we don't want to do it right now, and have something in writing, go through the commissions, that's, that's the best way to do it, so that it gets fully vetted. I wouldn't understand why we wouldn't do that. Otherwise, how do we, we have 100% authority to name streets right now. We could say, that's no longer Valley, that's XYZ, we can do that. It goes through the county, but we have the authority as a council to do that. That's not the right way to do it. But the point is, I don't understand why we wouldn't at least have a written policy with the process, so people that do want to apply can go through it and see whether the street they want to rename even qualifies, because there will be some things that just knock qualification out, if it already is a historic name. If it is, if there are some, like, so for example, if we adopted policies that would just say, no, this can't be renamed, for whatever reason. It's clear, it's gone through the commissions, it applies to everybody. But I think this is a good spark to say, hey, let's spend a little bit of staff time, let's figure out what does the city council want for a process. And at the same time, we can work with other businesses and other members of the public, other entities, nonprofits, that, that may want to entertain this. And we can get community input into what should the council's policy be? You know, what, how should we go about this process? There were a lot of valid points brought up that, you know, there's all these businesses that should be honored possibly, but do they fit the criteria that staff, commissions, and council come up with? So I think, I appreciate the fact that this is coming up again, because I'm, I for one think, I mean, you go to other cities and you see, like, Home Depot Way, you go to Alhambra, it's right there. Yes, it's short, but it's there. You go to El Monte, you see the same thing, it's Home Depot Way. Part of that is, that's another way to keep, retain, attract businesses. It's also a way to acknowledge historic businesses and businesses that have, and honestly, organizations as well, that have contributed positively to the community. And it's also a way on an application for a business such as this to explain, we may not all see what a business does, we, you know, they, I think they have eight locations, eight, seven, eight locations throughout the Los Angeles area, and I know they give back to all the cities, because if you follow any of the social media, you'll see it. But we may not, we may not all be aware of that. So I think it, for me, I'm not saying let's approve this tonight. What I'm saying is, I would love to see us direct staff to go through and create a policy. I think that's, that's the measured approach. And that doesn't mean we're going to adopt it. That doesn't mean we're saying, yes, we're approving this application, or yes, the policy is, is approved. But it should be vetted openly through the commissions, through the council, through public input, and see what we come up with. That would be my advice.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington? Yeah, okay. Councilman Manchaga.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a little different approach, because when I read it, I understood it as a request for the name change, bringing it back 2013. I understand there's no vote, that you just need council direction. So I'm going to separate it into two pieces. The first piece is the name change. So we don't have a policy. There is a request, no application, but there is a request. And as council, you know, that's a decision that we need to consider now, because we don't have a policy, so we're it. You know, we have to make these decisions. As council, we should have at least a minimum threshold to memorialize any street change name, whether it's this one or any future ones. And so we should be asking the questions that some of the public has asked, you know, what contributions have been made to the city? How does the name change benefit the residents and the city in general? You know, there's businesses that were named earlier, but there's also individuals, you know, it is Asian Pacific Month, maybe individuals like, for example, Mayor Chin, Chi Muwi, you know, he's the first Asian to ever serve. Or the San Gabriel Nursery was mentioned previously, it's such a long history, you know, it's been here since 1923. You know, is there any relation here with the request that's been made by the business? Also, you know, I have to go back to some of the things that were mentioned before, you know, what constitutes a longstanding business? You know, is it 20 years, 50 years, 80 years? I mean, there's just so much here. I do get concerned that, and I understand we don't have a policy, but the name changing really has to be much more mindful. And we start, it kind of opens the can of worms, too. I mean, are we going to start changing names more frequently? I know we haven't had a request, but, you know, there's Pulciano's, I was thinking about Pulciano's, you know, Pulciano's Deli Place, or the Hilton of the Sheraton Drive, or Claro's Lane, I mean, it goes on and on. So for me, the name change that is being requested without the application doesn't meet the minimum requirement or threshold for myself, and so my direction to staff is to deny that request, in whatever form it comes in, because again, there seems to be some disagreement here between request, application, you know, I'm just saying, I'm, you know, I don't think, this is not the name change that I would want to move forward in any way without the policy, because we don't have a policy. So then the second part of it is establishing a So then the second part of it is establishing a policy of some sort. That was denied back in two thousand thirteen, but there were some things taking place. So I understand why it wasn't taking, why it was decided at the time not to have policy. But now I, I think it's more timely. I, I do propose that we have that type of discussion. I, I don't think it's a high priority, but it should be more of a work in progress, so we shouldn't have a deadline per se. But we just need to have a policy to maintain that consistency, some kind of baseline, not just, you know, all of a sudden, there's, there's a, an application request, whatever it is. But I think it's so timely because unlike two thousand thirteen, we now have two commissions that are perfect for this. We've got the Historical Resource Commission, we have the Here Commission. We didn't have that before. With the Historical Resource Commission, you know, they were established back in two thousand seventeen, I believe, to keep our history intact, to preserve it. Street names, whether you understand what the street names are, what the background is, that is our history. And we need to preserve it in any way we can. I believe that our Historical Resource Commission, when they start doing their, their inventory, they can help in, in identifying those legacies, whether they're people, businesses or organizations. I think they can provide some really good feedback because I know they talked about certain areas, storytelling of certain areas. I think that needs to come into the fold too when we're establishing a policy. And then the Here Commission, you know, we established that Here Commission to bring better representation to our city. You know, what is the criteria, you know, what are the recommendations for the Here Commission? I know we have these examples, so it's a good place to start, but again, just customize it to San Gabriel. You know, what's the criteria, what community should we be recognizing? I mentioned Toy Parina, hopefully I said the name correctly. You know, the street name changes, is that going to help make, to make San Gabriel more inclusive? Would it help to make San Gabriel more welcoming? I think the Here Commission could really go through the vetting process and help. And between the both of them, I think we can have a really strong policy that just, that I think at the time, at two thousand thirteen, it was impossible. I, I know, I wanted to mention also the, both of those commissions, they've worked together through liaison. They're still working through the land acknowledgement statement. And I believe there's been some references about renaming some of the streets for those indigenous leaders who are either forgotten or erased from history. So again, this discussion is so, so timely. So my direction to staff is to have the Historical Here Commission discuss and assist them in crafting a policy which would then come to us. I don't think it's a, a high priority right now. I know they both have a work plan and I don't want this to in any way derail them on that work plan because it's very important what they're doing. But I think between the chairs and the staff, the city staff, they can come up with, at the proper timing of when they can add it to their agenda and really just go through it carefully because it's just so important. I mean, street name changes, we shouldn't be taking it so cavalierly. And, and there's so much to take into consideration. And I just feel, I just feel so strongly that both of these commissions are just so valuable and I think they would be happy to assist us. And, and so that's, that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Before I share my thought, I would like to ask one question to Aldo. That for this proposal, I mean, I'm not the policy, but about the proposal to the street name change. Does this proposal impact any resident? Is any resident being impacted if we change the name and they have to go to DMV and change the ID and they have to change everything? Mailing address, mortgage statement, do they need to do it?
Actually, it would not, not in this case.
Okay, I see, thank you. Okay, so here's the things, I, I have, I have read, you know, the, the minutes that in two thousand thirteen. And, you know, city of San Gabriel, we have been working so hard that to make our city become like a really business friendly environment. And, you know, I have heard that our former mayor Chin Ho and our mayor Dean that you have been working so hard to retain business, especially during the pandemic. So, I mean, the name change we have to concern about is if that would impact the residents. And if not, then we should evaluate if this is worth to do it and would that be improve or divide our community. So I would like to share with this because in our community, this is a very unique city. We have been talking about the nursery that we used to have some proposal, there'll be a Walmart at a time, a long time ago. So if the Walmart decided to stay in our city and said, you know what, we need a street, there has to be a Walmart Way. Otherwise, we would just move to somewhere else. Are we going to discuss about a procedure that how long, how many years they have been doing business in our city? Then we decided if we grant a street to them? And also, I agree with Councilmember Mechanga that about Chi Muwi post being named to our post office on Delmar. Do we have procedure to name anyone to the US Post Office? Or this is like a case by case? Because this is a very unique situation and who, Mayor Chi Muwi is the first, he was the first elected Chinese-American officials in our city. So I would like to share that I'm not watching the, you know, perspective from how much dollars they make or if they are, how much they contribute to our city yet. But there's a social value, it's more about the culture and elements. We have a lot of, we have like sixty-some percent populations is Asian population. And we have a one of very common, very important core value, which is we call the parental respect. So I have seen the, the proposal. Hinwali basically is the name of the father's, that the applicant's father. So the applicant's name is David, the son, right? Hinwali is the father. So this is, I think that is the, the main purpose for proposing this because that is respecting his father. So I understand that people will say, well, why we, you know, you respect your father, but why we change the city's street name and for memorial of the father? But we have to look at that way, how we define a grassroots business in our city? Are we defining them for how many years or more than they are grassroots, they are local enough and to be, have a name changed? I just watched the, I just read one of our proposal today, actually the meeting agenda. Our police, our fire department cabinet will be changed by one of the company that called Sanchez and Sons cabinets. And I just searched a little bit, that has been like almost forty-some years. And that is a very good example. I mean, because this is, we've called the Chinese parental respect, it's not only for Chinese. Actually parental respect is for, it's very diversified. It's for Hispanic group too, they respect their father, their mother. And that is the value of the society. So if one day they said, we, my father is a founder, they build a business in city of San Gabriel. And I'm the son, I'm continuing his spirit and working so hard to make the city grow. And grandson would do the same. We should encourage them. And business like Hinwali, this is a Jewish store, they, I believe they started from the ninety-nine focus plaza. Then they have their own buildings on Delmar. And they would like to name that very short street is not affecting any residents. And that is, I think this is, I don't really see a reason why not. Because we are telling other community too, that this is, we are treasuring the people's value. The Chinese-American, the new immigrant, they moved to the United States. They found their dreams in this country. They achieved the business goal in this city. And they just like many other business owners. We are all, many first generation and second generation. They would like to live and permanently contribute and live in this city. So I don't see there's any reason they are going to apply for a name change and they say, you know what? I'm going to close my business within next few years, but I want to have a name change. They want to stay here for a longer time. So I would say it should be really case by case because we cannot standardize that some of the culture elements. And we are embracing the culture, we want to make sure that this is some core value. Maybe it's more like a more oriental value because it's more family oriented. But if one day we call the Sanchez and Sons saying, I would like to have something changed, that city will help me to become, make my father very memorable. Because he is the one that founded our family roots in this city, I will vote yes. Because that is showing their spirit, they are implementing their family value to our city. And we should encourage more business owners stay in this city, not for ten years, twenty years, thirty years each, for like a one hundred. So why, if this is under that circumstance, not impacting any residents? Then we should really consider that have a name changed. Because people will ask, what does name stand for? I don't think a Jewish store will get more business just because the name of the street. But it will just tell people, we recognize that any hardworking immigrant or American, new immigrant, they success and they can make our city better and this is how we can give them any returns. So that's my, yeah, that's my idea, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
I don't know much about the history of this, other than what we've read on here. But I also agree with Wu that maybe we should handle it on a case by case basis. Only because I think that a lot of things come in play. For example, does this business own the property that they're at? You know, like the street change name in this case. I didn't see the reason other than honoring their father. What would be a significant change for the city of San Gabriel by making this change? That's one. And two, I also think that it's very important that we take into consideration the residents, even though it doesn't affect them. But they also live in San Gabriel. So maybe if we can adapt something like, well, if you can go around and speak to residents and get two hundred signatures that says, you know, it's okay or they agree. Because we do have to listen to the residents. I mean, and I understand this business has been here for forty-plus years or forty years. But like other residents mentioned, they have been businesses, there are businesses here that have been here for much, much longer. So for me, it's important that when we get an application like this, that we also ask like the reason, that we consult the commissions, that we consult the residents like we do now. Not just in public comment, but just overall, if there's a way, maybe all the neighboring like radius and some certain miles away from where the business is at. And also that we look into the history. I know somebody mentioned that we don't know the history of why the name is Ben Camp at the moment. Well, let's research that and see why it's name being kept in the first place. So I think they, they made some, my colleagues made some good points. But for me, I think we should do on a case by case basis because everybody, every, every business that is interested in naming the street would be different. They would have a different reasoning, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah, so right now, it's, today actually is the staff need a direction, right? It's either case by case or the policy, right? I, if, I still need asking the question of the council member Wu asking, if a street name changed, is there any financial impact for the resident or same street? Because they still need to take time to, to change, right? That's I, I, yeah, we want to asking too. Financial impact, I don't think that they don't know, right? The for the resident, because they need to request, need to spend time to do that, right?
Well, the financial impact, so there are two steps. There's the application process, which we listed a, a fee for that. But another financial impact to consider is, is the materials for purchasing the new sign. Maybe purchasing more equipment for anything related to the new sign. So that could certainly be a fiscal impact, I would say, that residents would, would not sort of be a part of, part of.
It's still have some impact for them, right? Yeah.
Financially.
Okay. It's, it's paid by applicant or?
Well, yeah, so sorry, misunderstood that question. So yes, so the applicant, if we were to draft a policy, we can draft a policy that would require the applicant to pay for those, those materials and supplies.
Okay.
What about the maintenance of the streets?
And that's a great question. That could certainly be part of that process where we could sort of work with Public Works to sort of put together language to, to help with that.
So based on all the discussion, I think it's, because the, this right now, even back to the two thousand thirteen, the controversy, the, the decision, right? Three to two. It's better, I think, have some like the policy if we can establish. But I also agree the case by case, even we have the, have the policy, maybe on a policy, we can put on the discondition. It's a case by case too. Because the people are always asking why they, he can qualify or who applicant can qualify to change the name.
That's.
So, so that's the need of policy, right? The policy, I think it's a good things that we have the historical privilege, the, the commission and the plus the Here Commission, that's I agree too. So these are two commission, maybe they can help the staff to establish the, some policy for the future if they need to change the name. Yeah, I like, I, I, I agree that Councilmember Wu, though some like the new immigration, they're working hard, they really want to do something. We respect to them, right? Okay, so, but also respect the, our whole community, our resident. So we can find the, the, the more proper way to have some guideline to have this some application. So, yeah, that's the, the, my comments. But also, if we want to do it, I, I, I still suggest we to, a, still, hopefully the staff can have the, some time to, because this is issue, okay? The ASAP, if you have time to do that, to, to do the, actually let the commission to do the moving forward or, or discuss whatever the, the decision they made, to let our, our council know that. Then we can see where we will be moving forward or some different choice, yeah.
I mean, obviously, I know that each case is going to be different, case by case, because it would be different history for each, you know,
Yeah.
business or resident that wants to change the name of the street. But if there is some kind of a, a, just policy, like you have to give, you know, first a history of, you know, why you want or an explanation on why you want this and, you know, what is your history with, with the city? Have you talked to your neighbors, you know, not just residents, but businesses around you? How do they feel about it, you know? So that we don't have to have like a bunch of people here with public comments and stuff, just maybe already have, you know, neighbors agreed or they didn't agree, you know, something like that, so.
Yeah, so the, I, so the, my, for my opinion, okay, we have, at least have some policy. But when we do the change, it's still case by case, right? Okay, that's my opinion.
Right.
But if otherwise, case by case, the people still asking, what's the, the policy? What's the, your guideline, right? Still, the, most people definitely will be asking the, this question too. So I think at least to have some direction for the policy, then for the future. So even the applicant will still put out like a case by case. So it's really, it's really encourage the, the business or encourage our his, history, you know? Even like, yeah, it's, it's like a Ben Camp, we, we need to see the, what's the history, the, what's the name and meaning too, right?
Exactly, right.
So we, we, yeah, it's, it's a good things, the, bring our historical city, maybe if we have time, we can research all the street name, you know? What's the historical? Maybe if we have time, we can research all the street name, you know, what's the historical.
On our free time.
Yeah, that's a lot of work for the historical.
I know, I know.
But, um, but I, I just think it's important to have consistency. So obviously it's going to be case by case, but we need to be consistent. And regardless if you have residents or not on that, um, street, it impacts the community. I mean, the north is going to hear about it, the south's going to hear about it, west, east, and they're going to say, well, how come they get to do it? But you have all these other businesses that have been here longer and we've already had a list of them that were mentioned this evening, you know? Why, why haven't we done the same thing for them, you know? Is it financial? Is it, you know, why are they getting preference? So a policy is always the best approach.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you need a baseline, you need consistency, um, you know, we, the story that you told about Hinwali. I mean, that story applies to all the businesses that were mentioned. There are immigrants too. They value their parents. I mean, there, there's a lot of similarities with the cultural side of it. But I, I think having a policy and having our two commissions weigh in. I think that's, that's how we're going to get to a place where it's fair for everyone, regardless of your, where you live and, you know, what's your financial situation is. Whether you're a business or an individual, an organization. So I, I agree, a policy is, is the best approach.
Yeah. The vice mayor, the mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to add on to that because I believe a policy will benefit everybody. Benefit the residents, benefit the businesses, benefit the applicants. I mean, I think it really will. But since we're the council, I think we go a step further and say, we're going to add it to the work plans. We do approve the work plans. So we, we don't ask them to do it. We say, okay, commissions, council wants a policy. And I don't think we should be passive about it. We should say, you know, within six months, eight months, nine months, you know, don't drag it into next year.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we, we give direction to staff to say, put it on the work plans, give us a timeline, come back, you know, a month or two. Say, what is the work plan? Um, and then we take it from there. So, I mean, there's a lot of important stuff on all the work plans. But if we say they're, they're too busy, it'll never get done because we do stuff all the time and last minute we'll add an item to an agenda or. But if you don't start it and you don't have a timeline, it never happens.
Okay.
We don't, we shouldn't be passive about it. We should say, let's, we want six months, let's have a rough draft in six months or. And then that way it comes to council as a rough draft, we don't have to adopt it. We can say, yeah, that's the direction we like, here's what we don't like. Come back in three months, like we have definite timeline. That's what I would prefer.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with the vice mayor Harrington that, yeah, we, I think that, that we should have a policy. I mean, I don't mean, we don't need policy, but I mean, still, everything, every case is different. Because I know that some of the shopping center, they don't really have those creation. They don't have a, a road that access to their area. So actually even they want to do it, but there is no space for that. But, uh, but for that case, I would say, yes, we need a minimal requirements for that. It's not everyone just can, they would like to change it. They won't, they will be denied anyway if this is a way, not reality. I mean, they, it's just like, I want to change to John Woo way? No, no way. So this is a, this is so important that we should really have a, something that put the policy there and make people believe. They know this is a sincere decision will be made by the council member. And I, I, I would, I would go with the, like a policy that we can move forward. And maybe we can just see if other cities, they may have done something. We see the Disneyland drive on Disneyland way. Of course, that is a huge, huge, yeah, Disneyland. But, uh, uh, how other cities perform when they have those requests? Maybe that will be a way better than LA County because that is more like a city site. So that's my suggestion.
So we're just creating direction, right? We're not voting on anything?
Yeah.
So we should ask staff for what direction they need and.
So I'm hearing a consensus to bring back a policy. Did I cut anybody off? I'm sorry if I did. So I'm, I'm hearing consensus at least three of you and I think it's actually unanimous. The one thing I don't have clear direction on is whether you want it to go to both the here commission and the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission before that policy comes back to the city council.
I think planning as well. I mean.
The planning, yeah, yeah. I think a lot of the commission we can involve too, even, even design too, you know, it's also happened. Maybe the street name, okay, actually the, my suggesting also not just street name change. And like a post office, like Mission Playhouse, I, I know the Mission Playhouse changing name several time too, historical. Yeah, that's I, 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 I hear about it. So maybe, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, for, first of all, uh, thanks to the Hinwali, the, the business in our city almost like thirty years. Also rest of allowed to the good, uh, good business owner, they have seventy years, sixty years with us, support our city, city. Yeah, yeah, for, I think our, our council is, it's really the, the thanks for the, they are do the good business. Also even like the, back to the nine years ago in twenty thirteen, your application, it's really been a controversy. But I, I feel, I, I thought it's a positive way, okay? At least they bring the, these things in our table. So moving forward, so we can, if we, we have to establish some policy for the future. That we, we, we have the guideline to do that, have policy and then, but I still suggest maybe case by case. So I think.
Well, it has to be case by case, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I, I'll agree with the vice mayor adding planning, historical and here commission.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Okay. Yeah, we have direction. Thank you very much, council.
Okay. All right. So we can move to next item?
Our next item is item B, Fire Department Annual Update. This update will be made by Fire Chief Wallace.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, well, Chief Wallace is making his way back up. I wanted to provide, provide a little context as to why this item is on before the council tonight. One thing I noticed is that on an annual basis, Public Works provides an update on our streets and sewers and some of our other assets. And I know that council and the community tend to really love that night where that report is given. And so I thought to myself, why shouldn't we have that same opportunity to hear from all of the different departments? So tonight happens to be the first of many. We'll do one a month over the next several months and I hope to do it on a yearly basis. So you can hear from all of the departments. The next one will be our Community Development Department and we'll continue through those departments. So Chief Wallace happens to be our guinea pig. He happens to have to follow Public Works who does such a good job every year. But I think Chief Wallace is more than up to the task.
Thank you, City Manager Lazaretto. I'm, I'm just glad I don't have to follow Chief Harris with anything tonight. Uh, good evening, Mayor Ding, Vice Mayor Harrington, members of the San Gabriel City Council and members of the community that are watching and here in person tonight. I'm Steve Wallace, the Fire Chief for the city of San Gabriel, and I'm going to present what I believe tonight is the first ever update that's ever been done with the Fire Department Annual Update. At least in my tenure and a lot of people's memory. Tonight, we're going to review our history, our organizational structure, some recent accomplishments, our current status of operations and, and a few items looking forward. So we'll begin with our history. The Fire Department was founded on April twenty fourth, nineteen thirteen. So we've just celebrated last month, just a couple of weeks ago, our hundred and ninth birthday. Uh, it's a hundred and nine years of continuous service to the citizens of San Gabriel as an organized fire department. When it was initially founded, it was, there was one paid city marsh, fire marshal who was paid seventy-five dollars a month and after one month resigned because he was on duty three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day, uh, living with his family in a fire station. Uh, he resigned for two months until his salary was raised to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. The original fire station was built at the site of the current PD, which is at six oh five South Del Mar Avenue. The initial membership was just a, a very loosely organized, uh, members groups of bin that were paid per call. They'd show up at the city garage, grab a service truck and a home-built engine, uh, and respond to the calls in the city. Shortly after, the home-built engine didn't work out so well, the city purchased its first fire apparatus, which was a nineteen fifteen American La France chemical engine. In nineteen forty-nine, due to concerns about railroad tracks bisecting the city and the inability of the Fire Department to get around stopped trains, Station Two was built at its location of one fifteen North Del Mar. That's the current site and still the current building of Fire Station Fifty-two. In nineteen fifty-seven, with the expanding city, our new fire headquarters was built at thirteen oh three South Del Mar, which we now now is Fire Station Fifty-One. Uh, as I mentioned before, the original fire station site was then demoed and is now our police department, which was opened in nineteen fifty-nine. In nineteen fifty-seven, when the, uh, new headquarters was built, the daily deployment was three fire engines, one ambulance, the fire chief, an assistant chief and administrative assistant. The administrative assistant took, during the days, also answered the emergency calls and dispatched, was a radio dispatcher, so dispatched units to the scenes. At night, a firefighter would be taken off the rigs and brought in and sit at the desk and answer calls and do the dispatch. And that was, uh, kept in place until two thousand, when we joined Verdugo Fire Communications. Sometime in the seventies, and I don't have an exact year unfortunately, uh, one engine was removed from service. In nineteen ninety-seven, we made a big move forward when we added paramedic service and I actually believe one of the original class of paramedics, John Atkins, is in our audience tonight. As I said, we joined Verdugo Fire Communications in two thousand. Uh, the next big change was in twenty fourteen, when we entered the three-city shared management agreement with us, San Marino and South Pasadena. Then after three years, that wound down and we are back into our current state that we have today. I'll talk a little bit about our organizational structure. In the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we currently have the following authorized positions. We, we have one fire chief right here, three division chiefs, six fire captains, six fire engineers. There's eighteen firefighters, seventeen of which are paramedics and one which is an EMT. We have an executive assistant and a now civilian deputy fire marshal. The fire chief reports directly to the city manager, the division chiefs, which are each shift managers, report to the fire chief. There are six fire captains that are the basically station managers that report to the division chiefs. Then the engineers and paramedics, uh, report to the captains. The, uh, the crews work in a three platoon system, which are A, B, and C. You can see represented in the red, blue and green colors. And they work a schedule of forty-eight hours on duty, followed by ninety-six hours off duty. We have four divisions within the department. Uh, we have the administration bureau, the operations bureau, the fire prevention bureau and our newest, the arson bureau. So starting with the administration, it's the fire chief and our executive assistant. We're responsible for department management, for budget, for recruitment, strategic planning, public information and community engagement, records management, public records requests, purchasing, ambulance billing and a myriad of regulatory compliance from lots of agencies with lots of alphabet soup. Our operations bureau, which is the most visible bureau and the most visible part of our fire department, is sort of the meat and potatoes of the operation. It's staffed by three division chiefs, six fire captains, six fire engineers and eighteen firefighters. The primary mission of them is the emergency response, which includes fire suppression, rescue, emergency medical services and training. At a company level, each company inspects on an annual basis, all of the licensed businesses and multifamily dwellings, uh, with occupancies over four, uh, four units in the city. They also take care of basic fire facility maintenance, basic apparatus maintenance, equipment repair and maintenance, and the ever popular school visits, public educations and station tours. Uh, in addition, the division chief, specifically Chief Brad Davis, is responsible for the operations of the emergency operations center and our disaster response planning. Our fire prevention bureau, which is a less visible but equally important, uh, and vital part of the city, uh, staffed by one deputy fire marshal who's based out of the majority building. He works across multi-departments here in the city, is responsible for plan checks for new construction and remodeling, all of our fire code updates and compliance and variances when it's appropriate. Uh, he also conducts life safety inspections for, uh, assembly in high hazardous areas such as city hall, the Mission Playhouse and the multitude of convalescent facilities in the city. The deputy fire marshal responds to complaints with fire code and code violations and also ensures life safety at events such as fireworks, uh, food trucks and city events like beer and dumplings. Deputy fire marshal also follows up on any, uh, major violations that are discovered during company level inspections, uh, in both our multifamily dwellings and our businesses. So our newest and a fairly exciting part of this is the arson division. This was, uh, really started about two or three years ago, uh, with retired DC Art Stafford. And although we've always had the capacity to investigate fires and do cause and origin investigation in the city, we haven't had trained in, in really fully qualified arson investigators. So between two thousand nineteen and now, we've, we've been able to get two fully qualified investigators that investigate suspicious activities, suspicious fires and complex incidents. Also as mandated, they incident, they investigate incidents with any fatalities or, or any injuries to civilians or firefighters. Since the investigations are very, very complex and very time consuming, it's a very cooperative effort between our San Gabriel PD detectives, the Verdugo Arson Task Force and the DA's office. Several recent successes, uh, one very, very notable is the Mission Fire. Uh, as we know, uh, Mission Fire, a couple of years ago devastated the Mission San Gabriel. It was quickly identified through work on the arson task force and both DC's Ikman and Davis, that this was not an accidental fire. They, uh, through exhaustive research, located a person of interest and subsequently made an arrest and filed charges. And this person is now awaiting trial, uh, in the Los Angeles County Court System. Some accomplishments over the last year. I think the biggest feather in our hat right now and the biggest change is a increase in our insurance service offices rating. Uh, we've always kind of hovered in the three, four, five area and we're proud to announce last March that after a survey in the fourth quarter last year, uh, we were awarded a class two, which, which is a pretty, pretty good, pretty good rating. Uh, less than five percent of the departments in the nation receive that rating. It has direct impact and, and, you know, palpable impact on our insurance rates for our businesses and homeowners. And what's really cool is we were only about seven points away from achieving a, a class one rating, which is only, we're given to seventeen departments in the state of California. So we're working hard at that. A, uh, the survey looks at our staffing, our responses, our effectiveness on the fire ground, our apparatus, and it's also some external factors such as water supply and fire hydrants. So we're going to work hard with the fire districts, we're going to work hard within our department and see if we can't take a shot at getting a number one rating. More accomplishments is what we were able to issue personal thermal imaging, imaging cameras to each of our firefighters. And this was a suggestion that actually came off the floor from one of our firefighter paramedics. Uh, it had been done in the city of Los Angeles and I've subsequently found out since I wrote this presentation that Glendale has done the same thing. So there's actually three departments in the LA County area that are doing this. Uh, it allows each member to have an infrared device, a handheld infrared device that can measure heat. It can see through smoke, you can see through walls. Uh, it really increases our search and rescue effectiveness and speed. It assists in hazard investigations, it inserts and assists in fire alarms off, so instead of poking holes in people's ceilings and opening up walls, we can locate heat sources and do rule out, so we don't have to make, do damage to business. It enhances firefighter safety. If we have a firefighter go down, every member of that crew now can start searching for a firefighter. Instead of having to share one device, everybody has one. So it's a big force multiplier. The best part on the city side of this is a hundred percent grant funded. And as I said, we are actually one of three departments in the LA area to have this technology. Uh, as we know, this is mental health, what month? Uh, mental health is, has become a big, big hot button issue within the first responders and the fire service especially. In the past two years, the level of suicides, post-traumatic stress disorder and compassion fatigue with first responders is off the charts. We historically have not been very good at admitting when we need help. And therefore we've never really had a, a way to intervene and, and get help. There's always been stigma attached to it. So I'm happy to report, and I believe we reported back sometime last year in a Thursday update, that we have partnered up with the Counseling Team International to provide twenty-four seven mental health, uh, counseling and crisis intervention for the Fire Department. It's a hundred percent confidential, it's completely anonymous. We never have any idea if a member has reached out or who a member might have reached out to, to get help. Uh, all we get is a generic bill with no identifiable, identifiable, identifiable information. I'll probably have to call him after I'm done with this presentation. Uh, a big component of this is that they provide critical incidents trustee briefing, which after traumatic events, deaths, I can think back to a incident where I was in incident commander, you may remember on Del Mar Avenue where a, a infant and grandmother were killed in hit and run accident. This stuff wasn't in place and, and that, that really impacted us. We, we lost a couple of members, long tenured members after that, they retired soon after that. And I, I have to believe that that had to have some sort of impact on them. So this is in place, it, it is being used. I do see the bills, the members are using it. And it's just, it's, it's just another thing to help. And it's just another thing to help the longevity and wellness of our members. A more tactile thing that you might see driving around the city, we finally put a new rescue ambulance into service. It went into service last month. It was a long labor of love that we, due to budget challenges and manufacturer delays and pandemics and supply chain shortages, this got delayed by quite a while. But it's in service, it's a twenty-twenty-one, beautiful twenty-twenty-one Ram, five-five-hundred chassis, with a locally-built leader ambulance module. Leader's based in Almani and has built a number of our ambulances in the past. It does replace our two thousand twelve Model Ford. It enables absolutely state-of-the-art patient care and rear-rolling emergency room. A lot of the procedures that we do in the field and while in route to a hospital are the same thing that the doctors and nurses are going to do in the hospital. And we're happy to provide the best care, and this ambulance helps do it. I believe this next picture is going to be one of the maiden calls. Yeah, there may be a few council members that have written in there already. So, look for the new RA fifty-one driving around town. As we move on with equipment, firefighter cancer is a big problem in the fire service. So, as we look at our personal protective equipment, we're trying to follow some of the best practices in cancer prevention. And for us, that included issuing updated and pretty high-tech turnouts. It was a spec that was developed by LA County, it's used by LA City and Vittoria County Fire Departments, that provides a lot of protection from contaminants, a lot of sealing from fire gases getting into the sleeves and your legs. And we're happy to report that everybody in the department has been issued one set of these, and we're in the process now of converting all our backup sets to the same model. So, everybody will have two complete sets, so one can be dirty and laundered and have a clean set to go back on the rigs. As we know, we're doing more and more wildland firefighting, so we've upgraded our PPE in the wildland realm as well. We've issued a personal set of web gear and a fire shelter for each member, which lets it be sized and fit properly for each individual member, and lets the fire shelter be the right size for each member as well. We always hope we never have to use it, but if we do, we want to have it that it absolutely fits, so it's not like a loose pair of socks or an oversized t-shirt that's not doing its job. We've also put out significantly improved lightweight wildland shirts and pants. And we are on the cusp right now of individual respiratory protection, which is still in the wildland realm. It's still something fairly new. But through grant money last year, we were able to purchase it, and we're just about to issue it for this season. In a sort of a sign of the times, the fire department is wearing body armor a significant amount of the time now. And we've got grant money now to replace our body armor. That's in the bidding stages, and we hope to have that project completed by the end of twenty-twenty-two. On the training side, a couple of big firsts for us. We completed our first-ever San Gabriel Fire Academy for new hires. In the past, we would have a ten-day orientation program that was basically on-the-job training. The new hire would come on, get assigned to a rig, try to do orientation and training in the midst of running calls. And with the expectations of the fire department now, it just was not working anymore. So, last fall, we were able to dedicate a cadre of three people, a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter, as well as supplemental assistance from the on-duty crews. In a very, very robust ten-day program, which consists of what you're seeing up here with lots of orientation time, familiarization with computers, radios, and equipment, lots of EMS policy and procedure, lots of evolutions in structural, vehicular, and wildland firefighting. Paramount to our operations is firefighter safety and survival. And then lots of hands-on time in the burn container with cutting cars and with car fires. For our more tenured members and people that are looking for career development, we instituted a captain's academy. It was something I kind of had the framework of knocking around on my desk for the last two years, and Captain David Milligan grabbed it and really, really, really ran with it and put together an amazing seven-day program. We opened this up to agencies outside of our own, and we had participants, I believe it was from San Marino, Arcadia, Pasadena, and Alhambra coming to attend as well. So, a lot of the topics went over the basic things that nobody tells you about being a captain. So, we went over the roles and responsibilities of the company officer. A big one, which is followership to leadership and going from the buddy to the boss. Lots of ethical considerations. Had some trainers come in from the California State Fire Marshal and offer sort of abridged versions, Reader's Digest versions of a lot of the company officer classes. Every participant went to Verdugo Fire Communications and did a sit-along, which is a ride-along with the dispatchers. They got to see what it's like on that side of the radio, answering the nine-one-one calls, as well as dispatching and dealing with the units in the field on the radio. And then it was wound up with some tactical simulations by a thing called the Green Cell, which is sponsored by the Los Angeles Area Fire Chiefs Association Regional Training Group. At no cost to us, it's funded by grants, they come around all the departments, build simulations of occupancies and buildings in our city based on previous calls, and run people through the tactical simulations in real time. I'll go into our current operations now. We'll start at Fire Station Fifty-One, we'll talk about our facilities. As I mentioned before, it was built in nineteen fifty-seven, it's had remodels in two thousand eight, which included the kitchen. And from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, we worked on mixed-gender dormitories, mixed-gender shower and locker room facilities, and most recently in Station Fifty-One, a updated shower and locker room as the main locker room. The site currently holds the fire station, the emergency operations center, and two detached storage buildings. The administration, Engine Fifty-One, RA fifty-one, and reserve apparatus are stationed at this location. We have reached maximum capacity for staff and apparatus and our operations. As it was discovered during the bathroom renovation, we're going to need some repair to the roof and the apparatus floor. And thanks tonight, we are going to have a beautiful new locker room. You'll see a picture in the middle of the current state of the locker room, and I think the guys will be very, very appreciative of what's going to be coming in there. The EOC is going to get an IT upgrade, and that's coming up in the next fiscal year. So, if you look at the picture in the left and the center, that's our new bathroom and shower room. That was completed by our Public Works, completely done in-house. And then the existing lockers, which are original to the original construction of the building, and those will get replaced with what you saw in your package tonight. And again, we thank you very much for your support. That's going to be a very nice improvement and really change the tone and feel of that building. Moving on to Station Fifty-Two, built in nineteen forty-nine, kitchen remodel in two thousand eight, and again, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two, various renovations to dormitories, establishing mixed-gender dormitories and lockers. And then during the pandemic, the firefighters took it upon themselves to do a lot of paintwork and just real nice touches around the station to make it look good, very fresh, and very livable. That site is the fire station, and then the brand-new auxiliary storage building. Engine Fifty-Two is stationed at that location. And again, we're at maximum capacity for staff and have looked at it as a possible location for a future RA. And thankfully, right now, there's no major repairs needed on that building that we've identified. So, we look at it, there's a new front door that just got painted red. There's wireframe turnout lockers. As we look more to the right side, you can see that the doors that they painted striped and lettered. And then down in the bottom is a brand-new storage building that's gone in in the last couple of weeks that removes a lot of the clutter that was just in the station, and we're able to put our wildland PPE and spare turnout gear in that building. So, as far as our apparatus and our fleet, we have four triple-combination pumpers. And a triple-combination pumper is a pumper that you'd see on the street. Triple combination means that it has hose, it has a water tank, and it has a high-capacity pump. We also maintain two rescue ambulances, a frontline and a reserve, a frontline and a reserve command vehicle, a utility truck for each station, four staff vehicles, and a Polaris ATV that was purchased on a grant some years ago, originally designated for USAR, and now we use it in our wildland deployments. And yes, we do still have our nineteen fifty-seven Mac, which we use each winter for Santa, and you see around the town during the summer for a few special events. Here's our apparatus roster. You can see that we have from twenty sixteen back to nineteen ninety-five. And the actual ninety-five pickup on there is slated for replacement. Due to council support, we were budgeted for replacement for that this year. And unfortunately, we're having a hard time acquiring a chassis and a body for that, but we are still working on that one. There's our two current engines, Engine Fifty-One on the right, which will be replaced through the program that was approved in the last meeting. Engine Fifty-Two on the left. If you look at the monikers on the top, the brick house for Station Fifty-One pays homage to the original red brick on the inside of the station. And moving on up for Station Fifty-Two is, Engine Fifty-Two is designated as a move-up engine, which when another city's exhausted of resources, it'll get moved up to help cover and provide services in other cities, much like happens to us, say even yesterday, when we went to a structured fire in Alhambra, we didn't have resources, so Arcadia had engines in our city covering our city while we were out. There's our new rescue ambulance, a few of the staff vehicles, including the new Explorer that I'm privileged to drive, and one of our utility vehicles. So, as far as responses, we averaged about three thousand calls a year pre-pandemic. That dropped during the height of the pandemic to about twenty-eight hundred calls per year. Both our call volume and transport volume is rebounding and on an upward trend. Year-to-date, and this data is just a little old, but very close, we've tallied over a thousand five unique events so far this year. And that equates to seventeen hundred and twenty-six times units have gone out the door. RA fifty-one is the busiest with just under seven hundred runs so far this year, followed by Engine Fifty-Two with five hundred and six, Engine Fifty-One with four hundred and seventy-eight, and Battalion Five, which is a specialty unit with forty-five responses. We're very proud of our response times. Our goal is to be out the door and on the road and under sixty seconds from the time we receive a dispatch. Ninety percent of the time, and we're meeting that goal ninety-eight percent of the time at fifty-seven point one four seconds. Our total response time is the goal, where we want to get one unit on scene, taking action, mitigating an incident within six point six minutes, ninety percent of the time. And our response time is at four point four three seconds, ninety percent of the time. So, we're meeting and exceeding our response goals. In twenty-twenty-one, we received automatic aid on about twenty-five percent of our incidents with us in the city. That's when we have no unit available or requires specialty units that we don't have. So, other cities with the auto-aid agreement, the unified response, and Verdugo will send us rigs at no charge. Out of those seven hundred and twenty, four hundred and forty-eight of them were concurrent EMS calls, so we had more than one EMS call running in the city, that's sixty-two percent of the time. And outside agencies completed two hundred and forty transports, patient transports. And I've had the question before, well, what happens, who gets the billing for that? The outside agencies retain the billing when they come into their city with our ambulance, much as when we go into someone else's city, we retain the billing. Ladder trucks, additional engines, battalion chiefs, and specialty units like light and air units, hazmat, respond into the city on a very, a lot of different incidents and for station coverage. And these resources counted for two hundred and seventy-two of the responses into our city last year. It doesn't not get returned, we go in, we've gone in four hundred and six times in twenty-twenty-one. A hundred and fifty-six of those were EMS calls with transport, which we recovered the billing. And a lot of these are made up by traffic collisions on the I-ten freeway, which are on the Alhambra-San Gabriel border. And due to the positioning of our fire stations, we have a much faster response time into Alhambra on the freeway than any of the Alhambra units. We utilize our automatic aid, nearly fifty-seven percent more than it's received, so it's a really good deal for us. Really, really good deal for us, and it's definitely one of the benefits of our participation in Verdugo and the Unified Response Plan. So, a big one for us right now, and I know many people are aware of this, is our staffing. Across California, fire departments are experiencing unprecedented shortage in staffing as we have turnover. And we're no exception. And unfortunately, our situation's been compounded by budgetary challenges and a number of long-term injuries that have been sustained on duty. In the past, going back before twenty nineteen, to achieve balanced budgets, we were holding six positions open. We never froze them, we never eliminated them, but we did hold them open to get some staffing savings. And now, we're experiencing staff that's leaving for other agencies. Recently, we've lost three firefighter paramedics, one to Loma Lita, two to the Orange County Fire Authority, and we have one standing by that will lose to Pasadena at the end of May. As I speak, there are six of the eighteen firefighter spots vacant. At present time, we have one division chief, one engineer, three firefighter medics that are all out on long-term injury. One fire captain will retire on May twenty-seventh, Captain Negrete is going after thirty years, he'll be out on May twenty-seventh. And Engineer Tran is going out on May tenth to have some follow-up soldier surgery. So, we'll actually have two engineers out again. And right now, we have one captain, Captain Kevin Murphy is temporarily assigned up as a division chief as we were down to one division chief for a period of time. With all this doom and gloom, there haven't been any service reductions or apparatus brownouts at all during this period. And I have to give kudos to the firefighters, the engineers, and the captains who have absolutely been willing to keep these positions filled and keep the rigs rolling out the door. Unfortunately, as we're learning, this is not going to be a sustainable model. The fatigue is setting in, and with fatigue, I'm worried that we're going to start seeing some injuries. Not to say that we don't have any solutions, we have a place to go with this. I'd say all of this is in place right now, we've moved to a continuous, open recruitment with the Human Resources Director, we are working on an agreement with the association to be able to underfill our paramedic positions with very, very high-quality firefighter EMTs to get people in the seats. We have enough paramedics to cover all our paramedic positions right now, maintain paramedic assessment engines as well as RRA, but get some firefighters in to fill these seats, and then once we get them through probation, we'll provide sponsorship to paramedic school to bring them back up to the same standard that we have now. We've also used in the past several provisional hires, and we're expanding our utilization of external recruiting services. We've gone to the National Testing Network, and we now have the opportunity to use the California Join the Premiership Committee list. So, as we look forward and we're going to the future, there's a couple of items. The most important one of these right now is going to be to establish an identity. As we know, for the last few years, and I'm not asking for direction tonight, I'm not asking for a decision, but I just want to put it out there that, you know, this question of merging into LA County Fire has been on the periphery for a lot of years now. And we really need to come to a conclusion and make a decision on where we're going to go with that thing. You will be getting updated information to both the council, and we're doing it to all the employee groups as well that are in the fire department, that'll put what the picture is out there and help and make the best decision for the city. The next thing we need to do is really get our staffing stabilized. We're at a very, very critical juncture. It's going to be important that as we can, we make the city competitive with other agencies, as well as we examine our job requirements. You know, do we need to have all, an all-paramedic force? You know, can we really effectively put the EMTs in and then get, transition them into paramedics? But what's really important is we keep bringing high-quality candidates in, and once we got them, that we retain them and we keep them here. We need to conduct a standards-of-cover survey. This was done as we came out of the three-city model in twenty sixteen and seventeen. And it's a very, very in-depth study done by an independent consultant that looks into all aspects of our operation and our service delivery. At the end of the study, they'll bring back a report with results and recommendations presented to both staff, and as we did last time, we would bring it back to council as well. And then a big one for us that we've never been able to do, although we've been budgeted for it, is to maintain four-member constant-staffed apparatus. It's an industry standard, it's a standard of care. And as we move into a time where we have the already budgeted positions to do this, we really need to make an effort to make this happen. With four-member versus three-member apparatus, the efficacy in the studies by National Institute of Standards of Technology and UL have demonstrated beyond a doubt the efficacy of the four members in firefighter safety, in fire operations, and in the majority of our calls in emergency medical services. So, we do have the authorized positions, they are budgeted, and I just want to note that we won't be seeing a four-member ambulance. Four-member, the staffing in an ambulance is controlled by the LA County EMS Agency and is right now in our agency to paramedics. So, it is my intent, once we get our positions filled, to keep our engines staffed with four members. Once we get some of these goals addressed and some of these decisions made, the next priorities, and again, subject to current needs and conditions, are going to be to potentially stand up an additional rescue ambulance. In our last standards-of-cover survey, it was noted that our current ambulance exceeds by ninety percent the standards of use for emergency hours worked. We need to exploit deploying a nurse practitioner, which several agencies around Southern California have done, which is really, really a service enhancement that gets a higher level of medical care out into the community for our frequent flyers, for our people that refuse medical treatment, it lets them follow up, they can prescribe medications, and they can provide follow-up care tied in with our paramedics. And then something I don't think has been done, as you look at the gaps, you know, from twenty twenty to twenty fourteen, when we went into the three-cities model, is we've never really had a regular evaluation of the service delivery in our service model. So, I'm going to recommend that a minimum of five years, and maybe sooner, we examine where we're at and what we're doing, and is it the most cost-effective and best service that we can provide the city? that we can provide the city? Fire response shouldn't be looked at as a cost center or a profit center. I don't think that it is here. It is expensive, but we need to deliver this with responsibility to the taxpayer. So, regular examination of service models. And with that, that brings my rambling to an end. Here, we'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. Assistant Speaker, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, I believe we have Debbie Kilgore.
Okay.
So no questions?
Yeah, it's a public comments.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
I just have two comments about this changing, or questions, street-changing name. What is the cost for all the map services? What is, who is going to pay for changing all the map services? I have a map book, you've got Google, you've got everything, so who changes that? And for the fire department, I want them to stay San Gabriel and not LA County. So please, figure out how to keep them. I used them a year ago when I had an emergency. I couldn't breathe, and they came and made sure I got to the hospital right away. So thank you for the services.
Thank you. Any public comments? This is just a presentation and a report for the city council to receive the file. So, is a, any council member?
I think it was a great report, very informative, and I'm glad that it touched a little bit of everything, even the county thing that's coming up, because, you know, that's been a big issue back and forth.
Yes, it is.
So you're absolutely right. I think we should, at some point, just address it and get it over with.
Any?
I just wanted to thank you for the report. I think, like Councilmember Rivera said, it's very thorough, touched on a lot of stuff. And there were a couple of questions I had in the, I took a couple of notes. You talked about the new turnout gear. How long does that take to clean up and get back into service?
We use an outside contractor to clean it. Generally, they'll turn it around within 24 hours, 24 to 36 hours.
So once we go past two, let's say, big incidents, then we would kind of be reusing one, or how does that work?
Uh, yes, we would be reusing one.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the next thing on the staffing, is that, do you, you said, I wanted to know, like, the total number we're down, like, because I think you gave a breakdown, but I didn't quite understand, how many, like, are budgeted, and how many do we have filled right now?
There's six vacancies right now.
Total?
Total, and with the retirement at the end of May, it'll be seven.
Okay.
Then I have, I'm assuming a firefighter separation at the end of May, which will bring us to a total of eight.
Out of?
Out of 36 authorized.
Total.
Yep.
That's a pretty significant.
Yep.
Any leads?
Oh, yeah. Loads of them.
Okay.
Loads of them.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you so much for putting this together. Lot of good information, and we need to share it with our community. Hopefully, we can put it either on the agenda and then have it available on the website, because there is questions, a lot of questions being asked. I really appreciate the response data, it's very impressive, so thank you for that. I wanted just to ask, just some clarifying questions on the auxiliary firefighter program, exactly what that is and how that's helping with staffing, helping with the four-member apparatus that you mentioned.
Sure.
Can you just share a little bit more about it? I think you had a conversation with Councilmember Wu and I, but I think it's important for everyone to understand what that means, an auxiliary program.
That's a really, really good question, very timely, as we've just rebooted the program. We shut it down during the pandemic, as we wanted to keep as many outside influences out of the fire stations as we could. So an auxiliary firefighter is generally a younger person that has completed a pre-service fire academy, or has a California State Fire Marshal firefighter one certification. They come in on a voluntary basis once a week. The new, the new criteria to become certified is on-the-job training. So what we provide is one day a week with very, very basic apprentice-level training. What it allows the prospective aspiring firefighter to do is actually work in the environment, get the state taskbook signed off, but actually experience running the calls. They're under direct supervision of a tenured firefighter and a company officer. They do not replace a paid position, they're not qualified to replace a paid position. But it gives them the on-the-job training, and it really teaches them how to go out and develop their skills so they can become a great firefighter in another agency. Part of our quest into stabilizing our staffing is pulling out of our auxiliary program, because we get them in there, they're spending all this time with us, we really get to see them, we get to vet them. We have them trained in the San Gabriel way, and then we're losing them in other agencies. And a lot of that was due to the fact that we're requiring a paramedic license. As we look to get some high-quality candidates in and retain, we're looking to our auxiliary program, because really, really good people have been lost out of that. We've peppered the entire Verdugo area with it, we've given them to Los Angeles City, there's two great ones at Culver City. I mean, I will say, there's a lot of us that came through the program that here, are still here working in the city. But it develops a great employee, it's basic employee development, it satisfies the state fire marshal requirements for on-the-job experience, and develops an aspiring firefighter with the skills necessary to be successful in the job.
Great. Thank you for that. Regarding the automatic aid statistics that you provided, my understanding is that whether you have your own fire, or whether you're part of LA County, there is aid assistance on both ends. So, you know, we're constantly helping other cities, they're helping us, but even if, you know, if you look at Orange County or LA County, they seem to also assist each other, like Temple City and Rosemead, they're helping each other, right? Is that how it works?
Yeah, they do help each other. Temple and Sydney, Rosemead do contract with Los Angeles County Fire for fire suppression services. Engine and Squad 47 are in Temple City, Engine 42 is in Rosemead, but they do cross boundaries, you know, they come into our city as well.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. So it really isn't as rigid as, well, we're not going to help you. Where there's a need, they all come. I know for our San Gabriel Mission Church, we had everybody there.
Yeah, we had everybody. That actually, that drew, that had a third of the on-duty resources in the entire Verdugo system here. That was at a fourth alarm level. LA County did not respond on that. Our agreement with them is that we spend an engine and a battalion chief to their fire incidents from our city limit to Rosemead Boulevard, and then they respond, an engine and a B.C. battalion chief into our city for any structured fire that's east of Del Mar. So we do have an automatic aid agreement with them, they are very structured agreements. With Verdugo, they've taken all the aid agreements with all the participating cities, merged it into one. And what happens there, much like what's going to happen in any fire department, the closest resource is going to go, regardless of its home city jurisdiction. If we, if Engine 51 was training at Verdugo and coming back through Pasadena on the freeway, I actually had this experience, a brush fire went off up on the Linda Vista area, we were on the freeway, the system picked us up, boom, sent us first to that brush fire. Dispatch generally sends the closest resource, appropriate resource to whatever the.
That's good to hear, from a resident perspective. There's no boundaries.
It's great for us, because as you saw, we have a lot of concurrent incidents, and it grows. We send an ambulance frequently into Alhambra, because they get very busy. We sort of joke that San Reno's RA 91, we call it RA 52 or RA 53, because they come down here quite a bit as well. So we're a beneficiary of it, but it's a system that, it works, it worked through the pandemic, it was getting close to its maximum capacity in the system, but we got through it. It was a big test of the automatic aid system, and it worked very, very well.
Thank you, Chief. And then lastly, the, it's the standard of cover or the conduct?
Yes.
Standards of cover study.
Standards of cover.
So is that going to be coming back to the council, or is that, I mean, how's that study determined? What do you, how do you go about taking care, I mean, you know, issuing that study?
Sure.
With an independent group of some sort?
Sure. We'll put an RFP out. There's a number of consultants that conduct these. We'll put an RFP out with the questions we want answered. Generally, we won't ask them with a lot of, we won't put a lot of predisposed in there, because we want very unbiased, unfiltered information to come back to us. So they'll come in, and over a number of months, they'll turn over every stone. They'll go through our response data, through our financials, through our apparatus, through our staffing. And then they'll look at industry standards and regional norms and compare us to how we're doing, and make recommendations based on development, based on what we're doing, you know, best practice recommendations for the future.
So it really doesn't come back to council?
It does come back.
I mean, afterwards, not beforehand.
Not beforehand, but they do come and do the presentation to council, that's one of the deliverables.
Okay, so if we have further questions, we would have to wait till they perform the study, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Does the firefighters have any input on the study, or do they?
Yeah, they'll be interviewed as well.
Okay.
It's a very, very comprehensive study.
Okay, great. And then lastly, the nurse practitioner, I think I had mentioned, the five of us had gone to that conference, and a nurse practitioner was mentioned in one of the sessions, and I believe it was Santa Monica that was up there for the nurse practitioner, and so when you have a nurse practitioner, is it better suited for some cities and others? For example, Santa Monica has a lot of homelessness, they have a lot more mental health issues there, it's a bigger city. Does it matter, or is a nurse practitioner could help any city?
Another good question. It's been piloted, community paramedic and nurse practitioners have been piloted in the area, as well as Los Angeles City and the county, very recently. And I don't, there's not a one-size-fits-all answer to that. What we would do in looking at that is examine what the needs are in our community. We do have a significant amount of people that call us, want to be evaluated, but then for whatever reason choose not to go to the hospital. And then we go back on them two, three more times that day, or maybe the following day. So having a program like a nurse practitioner, when we identify these households and these patients, we would try to tie them in with a nurse practitioner who can provide maybe a better level of medical care in the home. You know, we're very, very set up for emergency response, but in the past years, we've become the primary medical care for a lot of citizens, and we do experience that here in San Gabriel as well. So they want to be assessed, they want a quick treatment, and they don't necessarily want to go to the hospital, or warrant going to the hospital. But in-home care that a nurse practitioner can provide, you know, they generally have the ability to write prescriptions and to do a bit more than we're able to, sort of on the emergency side with the paramedics.
Is that taking place in all cities, where, because generally, you know, everyone always says, call your doctor, or go to urgent care that's within your membership, or I forget, your plan, your insurance plan. But I've never heard of people calling our firefighters, asking for medical care, that's what it sounds like.
They do. We could call quite a bit, a lot, a lot of what we do is primary medical care for folks, for whatever the situation is. They know they're going to call, and we're going to come. Especially during the pandemic, people didn't want to go to the hospitals, because they were really scared of going out. They were really scared of going to the hospitals, because even here in San Gabriel, there were tents set up, and you have these people looking like they're dressed for the plague, they're, you know, it's scary. So they wanted us to come into the house, determine what was going on, and try to set up a course of treatment or take a course of action, which we're fairly limited in what we can do with that. But the nurse practitioner, because of their scope of practice, does allow more in-depth definitive care.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize that level of work you were doing. Well, again, thank you so much, Chief, for bringing this to the, to the city council and for always being so responsive, too. I know, Councilmember Wu and I, we had the opportunity to do some training, or not training, I'm sorry, I'm overdoing it, to observe the training, not do it, but observe the training, and we were just so impressed with the level of commitment and skillset, and we got to see some of the new additions in part of that training. And I was surprised that it was so local, I mean, it's just down the street from me, very hidden, they're in the wash, but, but thank you for giving us that opportunity, the insight, and, you know, that was all, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I'll attest, I saw you guys holding hose lines, so I know you participated in the training.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Well, thank you so much, Chief Wallace, and this is very good report that you have presented the history to today, and I just want to share with my colleagues, too, that on April 20th, I believe, that there was a fire that happens on Palm Avenue, that is just crossed from Sheraton Hotel. And I did see that we, not only the San Gabriel Police, not only the San Gabriel Fire Department, but I saw the fire engine from Alhambra and from LA County. So is that, is this some kind of like an agreement that we, you call it Verdugo, right?
Correct.
So that is how that other neighbor cities that come to help, including LA County?
Correct. That goes back to the automatic aid agreements I was talking about, that with the standards and what we need to successfully mitigate situations like apartment house fires, commercial structured fires, the mission, we don't have the resources in the, in the city to do that, and it would be cost prohibitive to have that. So we rely very heavily on other agencies, and we provide services to them as well. On the fire you saw, the requirement there is three engines, two ladder trucks, and a battalion chief, and then an ambulance. We can provide the two engines, one battalion chief, and an ambulance, and the rest we need a balance from other agencies. So that's why you saw the, all the agencies coming in and working together.
I see. Well, thank you, and I know that the fire department will do the open house on May 14th.
Correct. My shameless plug at the end was going to be for our open house. Fire Service Day, May 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., lots of displays, lots of exhibits, demonstrations, you know, tables with community involvement, and everybody's welcome, please, please come down.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's great.
Yeah, one more thing. I know that for the unincorporated area of San Gabriel, we already have LA County?
Correct.
You're right. Okay. So if our department was to go LA County, does that mean that it just gets bigger, that whole network, or how is that going to work?
If we were to transition our services to the county, the current proposal out there is to bring in the same resources we have now, so it would cover our city. I'm sure they would, they'd look at, now that they have two more county stations, actually physically in the city, not the unincorporated area, that may adjust what rig goes to, what address. You know, as you know, there are little pockets of the county around, because they're unincorporated, the county does serve them. I will say that there are some of those addresses that, for some reason, we get dispatched to as well. So there's county addresses, and you can always tell by what the address is and the numbers in the address, whether it's an actual San Gabriel city address, or whether it's an incorporate LA County address, and for some reason, we do get sent to those as well. But I would imagine, and I couldn't give you an absolute 100% accurate answer without probably talking to one of their assistant chiefs, but I would imagine they would reconfigure their response a little bit, now that they would have resources in the city, there might be something closer to these than the corporate areas than what they send now.
Yeah, because they take forever right now. Like, literally, forever.
Yeah, the east side of their battalion, that area for them is known as Battalion 10. And in this area, you have an engine in Temple City, you have an engine down on Valley Boulevard, Engine 42, and then one up on San Gabriel Boulevard, Engine 5, and they've got a lot of area to cover over there.
A lot to cover?
A lot, yes, lots of area to cover, and they're very busy.
There is an emergency in front of the bakery, and they literally took like 12 minutes to get there.
Yeah, I remember a number of years ago, if you might remember, when a plane went down right next to your parking lot.
Yes, remember?
And we, we came in, that was a county area, that was auto aid, and we were there as the county rigs were arriving, and I thought our response time was far on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, just real quickly, if you can share that May 14th date with Nancy, so she can share it with all of us?
Sure.
Because it's not on our calendars, we just noticed. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. My turn. Okay, yeah. So, yeah, first question, because I'm doing insurance, I'm really happy you say we go to the Class II, but usually I know we have the Class III or Class IV.
Correct.
When it was started, I have Class II?
We were notified in the middle of March that we received the Class II rating.
This month, not this year?
The March of 2022.
Wow, that's good. Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, especially I'm doing insurance, I know that's really affected the home. Yeah, especially I'm doing insurance, I know that's really affected the homeowner insurance, the cost, okay. Okay, all right. Yeah, so LA County, what's the LA County class? Most, it's near to us, the LA County, what's the class, did you know that?
What's the cost of their...
I mean, the class, the...
Oh, LA County's class, it's actually kind of hard to find and it depends what city you're in.
Yeah.
They have a range of generally three to nine, with three being the very populated urban cities and nine being the outlined areas such as out in the Prairie Blossom Highway and Lancaster.
Yeah, I talk about it near, near.
So I don't know specifically, I could, what I'll do is let me see what they have for Temple City and Rosemead and I can compare and get back to you.
Yeah, that's, I think it's a good comparison for our, the resident community to know the knowledge, okay. And also your response time, it's, first of all, I want to clarify, it's the first number, it's 6.6 minute for the 90% of the time, that's talking about that you've got dispatch and then go out, it's 6.6? And also 4.3, 4.3 minutes, that's you go out, the minutes, is it difference or...
No, 6.6 minutes is the goal that we've set, that we want to be at 6.6 minutes 90% of the time or more.
Okay.
And we are, and this is a time from when the alerting goes off until the time you get out to the apparatus floor, dress in whatever PPE you need to get in, get into the rigs and go.
Okay.
It used to be the goals were right in the five-minute margin, and I think due to increased traffic and population, they've gone to the region and given us more, more time to get where we're going. But within the city, we still do a great job. We had, we had some time during all the construction around the Ace Trench that we were delayed because crossings over the trench and railroad tracks were detoured. But we've generally always enjoyed great response times, and that's a lot to do with these guys hustling out the door.
Okay. So is it also, I want a data, if, what's the county near to us or near to us the city, what's their response time?
Sure.
Did you have any data?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that data, but I guess that's something I could pull.
Okay.
LA County has told us that they will have similar response times, which makes sense if they're in our stations. If the apparatus is in our station when the call comes, I would think that it's going to be very similar. If it's out, who knows?
Okay, all right. Let me see. Okay, yes, that's my question, just wanted to compare the county or our neighborhood city. But congratulations, we, the March, got the Class II, that's a, it's a very, it's most, it's hard to do that, okay, we need to give to the plot.
Thank you. That, I have to give that to the guys.
Yeah.
You know, we might be providing the direction, but they're the ones that are actually out there doing it.
Okay.
They're the ones that are maintaining the gear, they're the ones that are in the field delivering the service. So I will pass your congratulations along.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah. And public comments too, right?
I have received no public comments.
Okay.
For this item.
Okay.
Just kidding.
Okay. I have one.
Excuse me. In regards to the name change, I want to emphasize a few things for you. First of all, pay attention to the original name, the historic value of the original name of the street, wherever that must be, because we shouldn't just change the name, it might have historical value for some people. Bent Camp Street, for instance, was, went from New Avenue to Palm Avenue, and then it got cut at the Hawaii Market, it used to be the Boys Market, they cut it into it, and then they cut it at the Edwards', which is now a Rant's Market. So that's already bastardized that street. Now, there's effect on the residents would be maybe title changes to their property and forming their insurance companies and different things. And then the other thing is the maps. I went to a map today to look up the streets and it says, San Gabriel Street Maps, up came a map and it didn't show California Street, it didn't show Abilene Street, so I had to go back and look up another map before I get the full maps of the street. So there's a lot of map information all over the place on the internet and your maps, it has to be changed for any street. Also, when my neighbor changed his garage, he was informed that he had to pay for a street light. So when somebody wants to make a street change, they should at least pay for something, repave in the street or whatever if they need it, and things like that. So we take that into consideration. And lastly, we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. A lot of cities here in the area have this process already in place. So staff can just go to those cities, look at their process, adapt what they want from it, and bring it back to you and add whatever they want to add to it and come back to you. It shouldn't take a year to do that because stuff's out there already for everybody to look at from other cities. That's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any public comment?
There are no other public comments.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, is it, it's a city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll make this very brief. I know we've all been hearing from the newspaper and the radio about the water, watering restrictions due to our drought. We've heard that it's going to go to one day a month and then after sometime this fall, it would go to zero days, I'm sorry, not per month, per week, and then it would go to zero days per week. That is not entirely true. All of the different districts get their water from different places and all the different districts have different requirements. And in fact, I think the overall goal is that we'll need to reduce our water usage by 20%. And so there will be various restrictions coming forward. We are working with our water companies and we'll put out information so that everybody knows what our requirements are going to be just as soon as we hear from our water providers on what those will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And the council comment and the conference meeting report will be started.
I guess I'll go first. I just wanted to say that council's been very physical lately. The first thing is 626 Golden Streets, Mission to Mission, that happened this past Sunday, it was five miles of car-free open streets from San Gabriel to Alhambra to South Pass. I was, got some bragging rights here, I was able to go through that, and it was so busy as the morning continued, started around, well, 7 o'clock, I guess, and then ended at 4:00. My husband and I, we were, we got the opportunity to escort Gabe the Sasquatch, he is very, very popular, and we brought him from Alhambra where we had the opening ceremonies, and we rode our bikes with him to San Gabriel. And San Gabriel, wow, it was buzzing, there was just so much going on, they had live bands, community booths, it was just a fun time for everyone. So thank you to Rebecca and her team for organizing and putting it together. The Grapevine Arbor was open, got a chance to go in there, and just people were just in awe because we have the most history of all those three cities. But that's just my personal opinion. And then we had the Safe Routes to School, I had some residents a little concerned because they saw a lot of families marching along and, you know, had to explain to them that it was part of the Safe Routes to School team, it was for Earth Day. Councilmember Rivera Wu and myself and the mayor, we were accompanied, McKinley Mustangs, where it looked like it was like 200 people, 300 people. We met at Vincent Lugo and marched down the street on Wells and then went to McKinley. And then Washington, we met at the fire station and then walked down, and it was just a really nice way of families coming together to celebrate Earth Day and, you know, just enjoy our neighborhood. So it was great. And then just a reminder, I think it was mentioned before, but I'm going to remind everyone, this Saturday is Block the Hate, it's a community rally and block party at Vincent Lugo Park, this is the second time they've done it. It's from 4:00 to 7:00, it's presented by Compassion SGV, and it's just an opportunity to bring solidarity to stop Asian hate and to celebrate the API Heritage Month, and that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu?
Well, thank you, Mayor Dean, and my council member colleagues, and thank you so much, and I have nothing really to report because we had a good time at the 626 Golden Streets and, you know, as a council member, you know, mentioned, I said that all five council members present at the grand opening. I think this is, it means a lot to, you know, that all three cities, that we are the only city that with full house, that all council members presented. So I think, I feel really proud of that, thank you.
Thank you.
They just said everything I was going to say, I don't have anything else left to say. I'll second whatever they said.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I really thanks the, for the 626, Mission to Mission, our city of San Gabriel, full council member attended the opening ceremony. Actually, Alhambra, they have five, but their cities are hosting, but we, we are the San Gabriel with the, it's a really fully support for, so I appreciate. I'm mayor, I'm very proud of it, and I also recognize all our council member, and I don't, I wouldn't forget to promote our city, so go to our city to have the lunch and go to the Blossom Market, we have the new, the food court. And yes, thanks to Rebecca, their community service do the good job to, yes, spread out. Actually, I think most of our council also, after ceremony, and then go back to the San Gabriel too, to see the, wow, it's a very, yeah, Alhambra's a lot of people, but I think our San Gabriel, it's a mission, in front of the Mission Playhouse, it's pretty good, yeah, it's beautiful, yeah, yeah, it's a lot of people ride by, yeah, it's really good, yeah, but I think I have to ride by too, to start it, okay, next year. Actually, when I, when I, when I'm in Shanghai, every, every day I have the bike, it's one hours go to my, my school, you know, so, and then back to the one hour, so that's a long time ago, I should be, come back, okay. Yeah, and I also agree that for the walk to school, it's really good for the kids and their parents get together, you know, so exercise, so, yeah, definitely for the current, if everybody want a house, they need a walk, okay? If we walk, you can, you can lose weight, you can have more health, right? Reduce the disease, right? Okay, yeah, it's a, and, okay, don't forget, okay, you, we have the, this, May 7th, hey, the, hey, ready for Stop Hate, right? And, oh, I think it's on this Friday, it's Single Damaia. Single Damaia, so I encourage our community to come out, is it Rebecca, is that right? Yeah, so, to, Flee, Single Damaia.
There you go.
I learned it, okay, yeah, all right, okay, so it's, I think it should be fun, especially, you know, a lot of people, it's two years, no, not in person, right now, it's, for my experience, it's a, Flee, Single Damaia, it's very entertainment, you know, it's singing, dancing, right, it's exciting, it's for the, we're a family, it's a get-together, yeah, that's so, our city needed, right? It's multicultural, inclusive, so running each other, okay, so that's my comments, so right now, what time? Okay, okay. 9:54, the meeting adjourned, and next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m., meeting adjourned, so.